More about that once we get to that agenda item. Are we live, Kate?
I'm live.
Okay, thank you. So welcome everyone to the Mayor and Council meeting for the town of Berlin. It's Monday, June 26, 2023. And as I just said, Mr. Eli Parker is going to leave us in a moment of silence, and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so the first item on our agenda is Agenda Item 1A, which is the Consent Agenda and the Approval of Our Minutes as listed under 1, 2, and 3.
Motion to approve all.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Oris. I have a second by Councilmember Ner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Let the record reflect that the Consent Agenda, Agenda Item Number 1, passed unanimously. All right, up next is Agenda Item Number 2, which is 2A, If I Were Mayor Essay Contest Winner, Joseph Eli Parker. Something interesting about Eli. In the back, we also have a former mayor partner, who was mayor between 1988... Well, served on the council from 1988 to 1996, and served as mayor in 1996. So congratulations on your grandson winning this wonderful win. So we're going to start with Eli reading his essay. So just so that everybody's aware, each year, the Maryland Mayors Association hosts the If I Were Mayor Essay Contest. It's open to 4th graders throughout the state. They all have a different... It's an essay theme. Everybody writes on the same theme for the year, but it changes year to year. This year was preserving history, and... Go ahead.
The theme was preserving the past to power the future.
There we are. And Eli's essay won the district competition, which is our local area. So do you want to read your essay?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Eli Parker, and I'm 10 years old. I'm very excited to share my winning essay about being mayor with the topic of preserving the past to power the future. This is my writing. If I were mayor, I would maintain the traditions of Berlin, Maryland, and improve them to unfold a new era of inspiration. As mayor, it is my responsibility to ensure that everyone is happy in my town and to conserve our historical ancestry. I would cherish the Peach Festival and the Taylor House Museum, because both are very important. The Fiddler's Convention and the Christmas Parade are fun to watch, and because of this, my citizens would be angry if I tore the events away. However, however, the Berlin Jazz Blues Wine and Brews isn't very kid-friendly, attracting less participants. To make the event more inviting to those with kids, I would add a make-your-own-music area, where musicians volunteer to help create children to create their own music. Also, I'll offer apple cider to enjoy. I'm sure that these changes will improve the economy of my town little by little each year, and the adults and kids will want to come back, making it a win-win for me and my citizens. As mayor, I've seen that there aren't any major events for Halloween other than trick-or-treating. I think that there should be a festival with the hay maids, apple bombing contests, and other Halloween-themed activities. I would put it on the county fields, since it's short-term. I would have the event before Halloween, so that my citizens can have a double dose with trick-or-treating, which I'm sure will be fair. I believe that these changes are worth the effort and will raise Berlin to greater heights. My job is to help our community, and this will ensure that in a delightful manner propelling my town... I mean, this town. Thank you.
So I don't...
Are you looking for a motion, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, uh-oh. You've got some action items on there. So in addition to Eli's district win, we also had Brian Anderson, Ramaya Gupathy, Tajal Alaf... Tejel Pele? Thank you. As our semifinalists for our district as well. So those three semifinalists were not able to make it. Do you want to explain why your classmates weren't able to be here? Okay. We had to span some geography. So Eli and his family lived close by and were able to join us this evening, but the other three semifinalists, we definitely appreciate their essays as well. I do want to recognize Ms. Shimko, Erin Shimko from Worcester Prep. And Ms. Shimko may have some magic sauce in her classroom or something, because not only this year did you have a district winner and semifinalist, but you also had the same thing last year. So that's huge. We've had district winners and semifinalists from Worcester Prep and Buckingham Elementary School in the past. But you back-to-back. I think there is something magical going on in there. So with that being said, let's get everybody to the front and let's take a picture together, if that's okay. So we'll have your family come up, and then Ms. Shimko as well. All right, let's come down here and we'll take a picture. Do you want to take your photo?
Good job. Very good job.
Congratulations again. Is there anything else you'd like to add, Ms. Shimko? I mean, you handled the little ones, the size of the competition, that I don't get to see the whole lot of.
I think Eli, I mean, obviously clearly knocked it out of the park, as we all saw. I mean, he's amazing, well-deserving.
Thank you.
And then, do you want to say who else we have here?
This is my grandfather, and this is my mother.
And your grandfather was also the mayor of Berlin. Yes, good job. Yep. All right, let's get in for a photo.
Okay. I'll go.
His grandmother's around, too.
Oh, yeah.
Do you want anybody else?
Yeah, Lana.
I called her out.
Camera shutter.
And, and...
Okay, ready? One, two, three, go.
Great. Good to see you as well. Thank you. Would anybody like a chair down there? No? All right, up next is Agenda Item 2B, which is our Horticultural Advisory Committee Project Update. And we do have members of our Horticultural Advisory Group come on up. And then, this is also spearheaded with our Public Works Department. So we know each other. I bend the microphone down here, if you don't mind just raising it, so that we can... With everybody here, it's helpful to use the microphone. So just go ahead and introduce yourselves, and then we'll get right into the presentation.
Good evening, my name is Edrovi. I'm the chairperson of the committee. I'm Georgie Anna McHoy. I am the... I'm an advisor.
Victoria Spice, also that.
And Caroline Downs, same.
Thank you.
Except she does all our...
She does all our graphics and all of our presentations, and she's just phenomenal at that. So we wanted to put a little presentation together for you guys and kind of give you an overview of all the projects that we've done for the 2022, 2023 year.
Can you move that microphone a little closer to you?
Towards you.
Towards you?
Yeah.
So you guys already met all of our committee members. We have Pete, Georgie, Caroline, and Victoria. We wanted to start with the first project that we did. One of the first things that the mayor asked for when we first got together was to take a look at Town Hall and the little planting area that was there. Because nothing will grow. There was... I think you guys tried planting stuff in there, and it would just die right away. So one of the first things we did was just dig it all up, put foot soil on top of it, and just put a nice planter around there. Public Works did all that for us, thank you guys. And then it was all planted with perennials. So it's all full of perennials, native, native pollinator gardens. We do have some animals in there that have to get re-planted every year. But, you know, overall, maintenance is pretty easy in that area, and it looks really beautiful. Our next project was the Memorial Garden. I think a lot of the stuff that was planted there had been pulled out at some point just because of lack of knowledge. We didn't know, not us, but like, you know, whoever was taking care of this at the time didn't know that there were perennials, and so it would come back. It was just, it looks like a weed, it looks dead, we'll just pull it out. So when we got there, there was really nothing left besides those grasses. But we came up with a plan, filled it with perennials, with our state flower, Rebecca. It's all coming back every year. It just gets, keeps getting bigger and fuller, and it looks beautiful every year. The only maintenance that we have to do to this area is just cut back, lift it, probably by next year, we'll have to start lifting and splitting, and then we can repurpose all those plants to other areas. Humanicator Park's sort of similar. It's kind of a dead area in there, a lot of mulch. Not much was planted. We added trees, we added a lot of cornflower. We also added bushes in the back. Sweet Bay, sweet bay magnolias are in there. Just cleaned it up and made it look really pretty. We also add, not us, but I forget the name of the lady, but they had this project as part of a bee... What was it? Remember? Was it Bee City Pollenator? Yeah, the bee houses. So we had one still there. They did all the work with Public Works. And then we had another one installed at the Table Tennis Park. Post Office was another thing we worked on. This is kind of like a before picture of, you know, what it looked like when we first got there. We've been slowly adding to this area. It's a really shrinky area because of the trees and how dry that is. So we just have to be really careful with what we plant. It has to be drought tolerant. It has to be something that, you know, it's going to survive the heat of our summers. Tim Munro, it's a new area that we created with the help of the Arts Council, I believe, is what funded this, and Main Street Fund. Kind of like a welcoming area to the Tim Munro Garden. I'm sorry, to the Tim Munro... Munro. So a little pop... Is it still in your screens?
Yeah.
There it is.
Cassie stood up.
That whole area...
Hold on for just a moment. It'd be nice to...
Very cute, huh?
Yeah.
It looks weak.
Those look really pretty, yeah. Those would be like, you see it?
Well, technically, this is a two-second thought process.
I'd just like to add that Public Works is doing a lot of the work here, and the Horticultural Committee's coming in and putting the plants.
Yeah.
So it's a lot of in-house work that needs to be saved and caused.
Absolutely. Public Works preps all the areas for us, and they're cute, too. Cody's out there with me planting all the time. Some guys are out there meeting with us. Like, it's definitely not just us. Yeah.
Yeah, just, yeah.
There you go. So with this area, everything was set up. We poured concrete, we ran electric to the new... Because there were the new electric stations that are there for charging vehicles. So we had to run it all under that, and then pour concrete and good soil. And then for Earth Day, we got it all planted. So it was kind of a community effort. You know, that's my neighbor. They all came out, and they all helped put this together. This is another pump project that we did, too. All of the, we added benches, and we added planters on Willing Street and down Main Street. The, you can see how empty it looked before, and now, you know, people are using them. Every time I walk by there, I'll always see somebody sitting there. It's just a really welcoming area. It gets a lot of use. The planters are struggling a little bit right now. I don't know if you guys have noticed. Like, it's, you know, the grasses are there, but everything else is kind of like not looking best. It's our fault. We didn't pick the right plants for that. Yeah. Our plant choices were not the best. We'll do better next year. I mean, they still look good, but, you know, it could be better.
We've had our fair share of plants that didn't make it.
So just one thing that...
One thing in the future...
Here.
I'm big, I'm loud. One thing in the future we would like to do is put a false gate in front of those meters. You know, we have to check with the... We already have the permission from the electric people. We have to present it to them, the store committee. But a false gate would not impede access to those. It would just be a gate with a latch, and it would have a black-and-white map of Berlin instead of the tiny one downtown. This would be a big one for the gardens, commerce, trees, whatever you wanted, right in front of that. And make it not an eyesore anymore. That's it.
Okay, that's the, all the planters that went around the lamppost. Those are looking great. The plants that we planted there are going to grow, and they're just going to fill and basically like a giant ball of color there eventually. That's my dog. And for, this was one of the last tasks that we did, I think one of the last items that we got to. Victoria actually designed a lot of this garden. It was right where the Memorial Garden is, that strip that goes along that where everybody parks. It was kind of like a big eyesore. Now, it all, not us, Public Works did all of this. We dug it all up, cut back whatever roots we could cut without hurting the trees, and then filled it back up with good soil, and it's all planted, full of, you know, shade, perennial plants. So it'll come back every year, it'll just keep getting bigger and more beautiful. The only things that are kind of started in there are the hydrangeas that we planted. We'll plant a few this year. But that's all right, everything else looks great. Table Tennis, this was funded by We Have Berlin. Thank you, guys. We presented this to them. We were kind of out of budget by the time we got to this. So we were like, well, maybe they can help, since they did the table tennis part of it. I think the design was done by Hunter Smith, who's no longer a committee member. She, she's very busy, so she just couldn't do it anymore. But she did design this with us. And it was all planted, back. Who planted this? It was after Earth Day, May 20, something. Public Works did everything. They got all the grass out. They made it all ready for us to plant. Again, it's a full pollinator, native garden. It'll come back every year. Maintenance is minimal, it's just weeding and watching. Makes it easy for Public Works. Actually, it was Public Works that gave us the idea to put this there, because they will make it easier for them to cut the grass. So thank you, guys. Whatever we can do to make it easier for them. And then the Pollinator Garden, this was under Georgie, but she kind of brought it over to us, so we're also taking care of it. Just me, and it looks really beautiful. One of the other things that we do also is we do all the pots at the Welcome Center. I'd ask for student visits. This is coming out of their budget. We did it for Christmas, we did it for, you know, early spring, summer. That's kind of like the last iteration of it. And then we also added a racks along the side of it. Those are looking really nice. Oh, I know. Caroline, we did that whole garden. That was a lot of work. She took everything out and just tinned it. And Tim, yeah, and her neighbor Tim.
Scotch guy, you know.
Yeah. And it looks, it looks so much better. Great work. And then, oh, we also did Pollinator Way. This was kind of done through Georgie, I believe. We kind of just finished it up. We got the planters in, planted it all up. Looks really pretty. It catches rainwater, so it helps with all the, you know, runoff that was happening in the street and in the, what do you call it, alleyway?
And those, those were made by the tech school, right?
Yes.
Worcester Tech? So the planters were made by Worcester Technical High School?
Yes.
Under Clayright.
Yeah. One of the things that the water guys asked us to do was to enhance the landscaper on the new water pump. So that was one of the lessons that we've done, too.
The well on Branch Street.
On Branch Street, yeah. They dug it all up, well, Public Works dug it all up. They added soil, we also leveled it, because we noticed that it was like the water was running off into the, and forming like a giant puddle. So it's more level now. We added, it's really our Pollinator Garden. Let's see, look at it. It's got grasses, it's got bushes, it's got inkberry, I believe, so the plants are there. Those are going to get nice and big, and it'll look just really pretty.
There's the gravello, too.
Yeah, we added gravello.
Oh, that is so cute.
Yeah. Just all around the perimeter, because of the raining, so it would splash back onto the, into the building, so. And just for easier access to the trees, like a little... I don't know what you guys call it.
It also sits with Jamie's guys. They'll get around it, they'll, without going through the plumbing, there's some, there's valves out front for shut the well valve.
There you go. Yeah, so I think the only thing that we wanted to add to this was trees on the side of it, river berches on the side. Just because if there's water that goes down into the ditch, so if we can prevent that water funnel, you know, which is... We've had a lot of community support. Earth Day was, we had a great turnout. We had a great turnout when we planted the Table Tennis Park. I think it took us maybe 25 minutes to clean all of that, because we had so many people there. Girl Scouts came out and helped. It was really, it's been a really great support from the community.
And he's always a smart, you know, he always has a smile. You know, he's, I'm proud he's one of my employees.
Restaurant Sure also helped clean up the park while we were doing, you know, planting, so we had a lot of help from them as well, from that group. Future projects, we really want to focus on Henry Park this new fiscal year, so starting in July. We are coming up with a design. We're going to talk to the Parks Commission once we have that, get that approved through them. We also want to reach out to the community once we have the design in place, before we start, you know, working things out. Because what's going to happen, probably all of it is going to come out, except for the sun. Maintenance in that area is really hard. It's, you know, both the yuccas are like daggers. Every time you try to pour anything out, you have to be really careful that you're not going to get, you know, an eye contact. So that all needs to be redone. General maintenance, we're doing every once a month, every Thursday, the first Thursday of the month. It's what kind of what we have with Public Works going on. One of us is always there to help them figure out, you know, if a weed, what's not a weed, what should we be cutting back, you know, that kind of stuff. I have more trees, we're always trying to find more trees. There's a grant that I think you sent me, or sent to Cody, that we're going to try to apply for, for Henry Park.
I think Curtis sent it to me.
Yeah. We might need a little bit of help applying for that grant. But basically, anything east of Main Street is applicable. So like Henry Park, Table Tennis, Humanicator Park, they're all mini grants up to 53, 53 trees or $5,000 or something like that. So we're going to try to apply for that. Redesign of Memorial, we want to make that more accessible. I think we both talked about that before, where the entrance may get, you know, wheelchair-friendly, so people can go up to the, to the memorial and plant more perennials there. And the last thing that we did was the Berlin Bruno Award. I don't know if you guys saw it during Pollinator Week. We, Caroline did a great job with a map of all the Pollinator Gardens, and you cited that there was a little award that you could vote for the best pollinator container from all the businesses in Main Street. So still have to look at... Thank you, buddy, buddy. I didn't really get...
Today's the final day.
Today's the final day, too. Yeah.
I think that's it, right?
That's kind of our inspiration picture for Henry Park. It used to be a very drought tolerant garden, because that area has no shade, full, full sun. No water.
Well, I know that when, I think everybody, speaking might not have been, when we started the committee itself, and we all, we didn't really know what we were going to get as far as the formation of that committee. We had a general idea that we wanted to improve the appearance of our downtown area and our public spaces. So I think you've exceeded expectations, is what I'm trying to say. And the partnership with Public Works and our staff is phenomenal, so thank you for that. We'll open it up to any questions or comments.
I just want to say, you've evolved truly on a remarkable job. You really enhanced the overall of Berlin. So we're real proud of what you've done. Again, I want to give you another round of applause.
And it's all volunteer time, too. Let's make sure that's good, everybody.
And we had to volunteer. And we had to interview and volunteer.
Right, yes. Just like all of our other boardings and commissions, but yes. Our Public Works staff are paid, but these are volunteers in front of us, so.
We may have talked about, he didn't know, or we didn't know what we would get. And I'm here to say what we've got is fantastic. Thank you all. For such hard work.
Thank you.
You've done a great job.
Very good, too.
Thank you.
I'd like to quickly say thank you to Jimmy and Cody and the Popper Forks guys. They really make our job easy.
All right, up next is Agenda Item 3A, which is On-Site Cannabis Consumption. Our town attorney, David Gaskell, is going to run a point.
Mr. Mayor, before we get started, I'd like to make a motion that we table this topic for the next meeting for two reasons. One, I'd like the opportunity to look and see what other communities and adults are doing regarding this issue. And also, we have so much on the agenda. I think the pressing issue is Harry Park.
So moving to the group. Just so that everybody's aware, the reason that we're here with the cannabis ordinance is it was brought up by the council to explore that. Our town attorney has worked on drafting some of that information. It's on as a discussion, because it's not an introduction of an ordinance. We really wanted to get into conversation with everybody. So we do have a motion. If there's a second to table, we'll just...
I'll make a second with a comment that, yeah, that was my idea to have this come up and thank you guys, the, the mayor for so quickly taking a look at it. I can see the room is full, and I'm guessing it's not for this matter, so I would second that. Push it to, are we doing it in two weeks?
We can, yeah, revisit our next meeting. I don't think there's anything pressing on it. We were just trying to respond to the request. All in favor? All opposed? Let the record reflect that Agenda Item 3A is tabled until next meeting. All right, up next is Agenda Item 3B, which is a subcommittee update regarding the disposition of Parcells 57, 191, and 410 at Harren Park. I'm going to run a point on this, but I do have my subcommittee members, Councilmember Ner and Councilmember Oris, as well as the town administrator, Mary Boland, and sat on that committee, and our town attorney, David Gaskell. David, do you want to provide an update, Gaskell, regarding the Open Meetings Compliance Board rule?
I can do that.
Start us with that.
Last Friday, this past Friday, the Open Meetings Compliance Board issued a six-page opinion regarding the complaints as to the fact that the Mayor and Council met closed session on three occasions, and also that there was a subcommittee forum. And the allegation was that those closed sessions and that subcommittee meeting violated the Open Meetings Compliance Act. I'm not going to read the whole opinion, but I will find, I will read the conclusion from that opinion. And if anybody wants to find a copy of this, this would be at 17 OC, OMCD, CB, page 73, 2023. The conclusion states, "We find no violation with respect to the closed sessions on March 21st, 2022, July 25th, 2022, and March 23rd, 2023, as the council's discussions fell within the procurement exception of Section 3-305b14." But there was also another complaint that we met in closed session regarding the pay study. And we, we admitted in our response that we should not have done that. So I'll continue on. But the council violated the act on March 27th, 2023 by excluding the public from a discussion about, about a personnel study that did not touch on the personal attributes of any individual employee and thus fell beyond the scope of the personnel matters exception. Finally, we conclude that a subcommittee composed of two council members and the mayor is not a public body subject to the act. Thus, the act did not require the subcommittee to provide notice of its meetings or allow the public to attend. So as it regards Harren Park, the compliance board found that the mayor and council did not violate the Open Meetings Act.
Point of order, correction. We do have a point for public comment after we have a chance to discuss and we'll entertain comment.
The council said it referred to the complaints pursuant to the act in plural. There have been two complaints filed pursuant to that.
There, there is, there is.
One has been adjudicated or has been added to any additional. The other remains standing.
That, that, what Mr. Hammond says is true, but this opinion covers the three closed sessions that we had and also the, the subcommittee.
Thank you. So before we get into the discussion, I do want to bring everybody up to speed on where we were with Harren Park as it relates to how we are today. So in March of 2021, the mayor and council had a listening session with the public to gauge public interest in selling two parcels, parcel 57 and 410, which are part of Harren, of Harren Park property. The council did decide to move forward with the RFP process. In October of 2021, the council voted four to zero to approve the request for proposal, RFP, regarding Parcels 57 and 410. In November 2021, the RFP was posted. There were site tours that were held for interested bidders. In January of 2022, the town issued an addendum to the RFP, which was to include parcel 191, which is also part of the Harren Park property. None of those parcels include the passive use area. In February of 2022, the bids were open. The town received two submissions, which were reviewed in public with the mayor and council. One was for a mixed-use development with 78 single-family homes. The mayor and council unanimously agreed that after public comment, that this was not the best fit for the property. The second or other submission was from Coastal Ventures Properties LLC, which included the redevelopment of the old processing building and a potential use with a garden center in parcel 410. In May of 2022, the council voted four to zero to enter into an extended negotiation period with Coastal Ventures Properties. And then in January 2023, the council voted three to one to approve 180-day extension of the ENP or extended negotiation period with Coastal Ventures Properties. That ENP, Gaskell, correct me if I'm wrong, should come to a conclusion in July, I believe.
I believe so.
Sometime in July. So with that being said, the subcommittee has met many times with representatives from Coastal Ventures Properties. There are a few outstanding items, I would say, Councilmember Oris, Councilmember Nair, regarding the, the breach of a, of a contract that can be presented publicly to the mayor and council. I think the subcommittee group, and the two of you chime in at any point, please. I think the intention of the subcommittee has always been, and I believe of this body, is to explore possible options for the property that could be viable, right? And I, I know we've discussed this many times in our subcommittee meeting, but we want to present two viable options. One would be the town maintaining the property, demoing the building, going to grade with that so that something could be built there at a future date. The other would be the exploration of the candidate with the RFP, Coastal Ventures Properties. I think the subcommittee, and to summarize this, has reached a point where there are mixed views with the subcommittee. I, I think a majority of the group does not want to continue with the negotiation. And then I think there's a subset of the group that would like to continue with the negotiation. So that's really how we're here because we can't take a direction one way or the other without the entire council's approval or disapproval of that action. So that's really why it's a discussion item for this evening, because we cannot have that conversation in a closed session. It does require us all to be public. So Councilmember Nair, Councilmember Oris, have I missed anything?
Yeah, short of the details, the specific details in the contract, that was the summation. But at this point, with so many people in the audience, so many residents that are very passionate about this, this property, I'd like to hear from them first before the council discusses it, if that's possible.
Well, I'd like to hear from the rest of the group if everybody's okay with that. I don't have an objection to it. I don't think we did. We can do that if I'm consensus. Does anybody want to have discussion first?
I'd rather hear both people too.
All right. So with that being said, there is the opportunity for public comment. Anybody wishing to address the mayor and council, please come forward. I think we can state that the topic is probably Harren Park, but if there's a difference.
Another question, what is still, what is the question that we are just going to address?
It's, it's not, it's not a question. It's just a discussion between the mayor and council and the council members have asked to hear public comment first regarding Harren Park.
So I think the situation really here is the public has not had the opportunity to review the specific details of any type of tentative agreement. So all they have is a picture to look at.
Right. So the.
So I, I think we really need to kind of get some legal guidance here.
It, it is not legal guidance.
Or suggestion.
That we need. I think, I think it would be premature to have public comment without knowing what, what could possibly be in this agreement. So I would suggest that, that, that we share, share the particulars of the agreement and then submit up this comment.
Okay, so I'll have to defer to our town attorney as to what points he believes can be.
I, I, you all can disclose whatever you wish.
Okay, so at this point, I'll, I'll try my best to summarize.
Well, Mayor, I happen to have a copy.
Oh, well, that's not what I was getting to. I was getting to the fact that at this point, I believe there are two outstanding items. I think that's the best summation of where we're at as a subcommittee, which is one centered around the final price of the property, proposed price of the property. The negotiations that we've had as a subcommittee have had the price above the $1.5 million that was originally presented in the RFP or the bid that Coastal Ventures Properties responded to the RFP with. And then I also believe the other outstanding item was the duration of a specified use for the commercial activities associated with 410.
Perhaps, Mr. Palmer, do you want to come up just first?
Well, I, I think that's part of the public comment. Really, this was structured as a conversation with the council first to gauge where we all want to go.
Do you want to disclose the details?
Well, I think I've just disclosed them.
We can introduce the purchase price or the terms of what we're talking about.
Well, I believe where we left off was the council was seeking $1.7 million cash for the proposal. And Coastal Ventures Properties had come at the 1.7 mark, but they wanted to see certain uses of at least $200,000 of that. But that would sunset, if those uses did not occur, that would sunset after 24 months and resort back to the count, the town unrestricted. I believe that's a good summation.
Well, I think we could be a little bit more clear on that. So the 1.7.
I'm not trying to be vague. I'm trying to respect the negotiations, but.
But we're, but we're asking.
So, David Gaskell.
Who? The council.
What can we say? You said we can say everything we can.
You can say whatever you, whatever you want.
What can we share? Because we, we don't want to.
You can say whatever you want, like, sir.
But I mean, these guys are like, what?
We can share whatever information that you choose to.
And what I would like to, to have shared is the particulars of the possible agreement related to, related to the demolition.
Right.
That is money provided by the town. The deconstruction of, of, of streets and, 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 and plumbing that's going to be provided by the town. And the retirement of the debt for this project that, that will not happen with this deal.
Right.
So, so. So I can answer those questions for you. So the demo grant, and Councilmember Nair and Oris, please correct if I'm wrong, and Mary as well, please. The demo grant itself, in the agreement, we've said that we would like those funds to be expended to meet the July, or June 30th deadline, I believe. It's when we have of 2024. And.
And, and the amount of that grant is?
The grant's up to $500,000 for the demo. Now, with that, the, it is not town funds up to $500,000. These are, I know, but I'm just saying it for everybody else that's in attendance. It is a grant that's been received from the Department of Housing and Community Development. And those funds have to be expended explicitly for demolition purposes associated with Harren Park.
And that grant was going to allow Palmer to demo whatever.
Coastal Ventures.
Coastal Ventures to demo whatever portions of the building he wanted to.
For, for his development of, of the property.
That's correct.
However, it would have to be, the scope would be defined by the town. The town would handle bids for that demolition project. And we would receive that.
And then I do believe that, that, that the agreement, that the agreement calls for the development of, of, of infrastructure and roads to be included that, that, that are supposed to be provided by the town.
So the subcommittee met and wanted to have the town maintain and own the roadway?
But usually, usually, it is the responsibility of the developer to, 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 to input the, the, the streets and the infrastructure. And then after various inspections is turned over to the town. This is, this is the first time, this is the first time I have, I have been part of a proposed agreement where the town is going to be responsible for, for that.
And I think that the difference with that, the subcommittee felt that it was appropriate because it does, it is a shared street. It goes back to a town park. It goes back to a town amphitheater. It does branch out to some of the development purposes. But then regarding the underlying infrastructure, in the agreement, it says that the proportionate cost of that infrastructure would be the developer's responsibility. However, if the town sought any additional sizing of services to reach our area of the park or the amphitheater, that we would pay that cost. And that if there was any additional sizing, we would cover that also.
I'm just worried. I am worried how a project of, of this nature will impact on our downtown.
Understandable.
And I do believe it will be, now, this is just me. I do believe that, that a project of this nature would be detrimental to, to our downtown.
And, and that's understandable. The subcommittee has wanted, and keep in mind, this is not a, to embark on the contract or approval item to approve the contract. I just want to be clear for everybody else. It's not to approve a contract this evening.
An agreement hasn't even been reached.
These are whether.
These are points that have been discussed.
That, that's correct. Correct.
This, these are points that have been discussed. And no, an agreement has not been, been officially developed. We're not there. But, but if we have a prospective agreement that's gonna, that's gonna include possible some of these factors of, I think that's not in the best interest of the town of Berlin.
And that's what the subcommittee is really seeking, is input from the council on whether the entire body wants to continue down this process with those outstanding items or whether the body wants to take a different direction. That's really why we're here, to have that discussion. Because the subcommittee cannot act on those things independently.
The subcommittee did come to a conclusion, we should not be falling.
Right. So, the majority of the subcommittee.
So, Jack, what do you want to share? Because you said, you said there was something you wanted to say.
I mean, I, I can wait till after the public comment. But I would like to, as part of my little spiel that I have prepared, I will include things that I think a public council would write to.
Well, let's share it then.
All right, okay, fine. What the agreed upon price, purchase price of the property was, in what I call in principle in the room, was $1.7 million in cash. There were some counteroffers in which the developer wanted to do 1.5 cash and $110,000 in a reserve for the entertainment venue slash amphitheater and $90,000 for rails and trails. I believe Councilmember Nair and I were in agreement that we should decide what we want to do with our money. And holding that back, that $2,000 was not in the best interest. It was.
Two hundred.
Two hundred. Two hundred. Oh, 200,000, yeah, well, well, it adds up. So, that, here my train of thought. But that, that was, yeah, that's where the big thing for me is because if we couldn't kind of agree on the sale price, everything else was a bit moot. We did the, the town on road, which, you know, in, in full disclosure, I suggested that we do the town on road. I thought that in the future, that would be beneficial to us should, should zoning or whatnot change. We did also agree in principle, as I call it, that Parcels 57, 410, the three parcels will be precluded from residential use in perpetuity. We did a five-year, and correct me if I'm wrong if I'm saying anything wrong here, that there's a five-year deed restriction on parcel 57 limited to commercial restaurants, boutiques, gift shops, and retail. Parcels 410 and 191, limited commercial garden center, excuse me, commercial and retail garden center for 10 years following receipt of the certificate of occupancy. The road, the road with the mayor, mayor alluded to that proportional cost for that would be in there. And that's the nuts and bolts of what was agreed to in principle. So that's fundamentally what we're talking about. I mean, there's some, you know, there's some other things in here like the, I don't want to say the buyout, but the, if, if it goes awry, they get money back and all that stuff. But to me, that's the nuts and bolts. I really think that, that you all should have known that in order to have participation in what we're asking.
So when we first started this project, at least for me and I think for many, I had two goals in mind. One was to bring forth a, a project that would really enhance the town. And truthfully, I think Palmer and Sandy put together a nice proposal and brought forth a very nice project. The problem lies within the second goal, and that was to retire the debt. I mean, the town still owes a significant amount of money on this property. And even if we complete this deal with Palmer, we're still going to end up with a significant amount. amount of debt that we can't manage here. And for me, that's a big problem. Can't get past it. And that was one of the reasons that, at the end of the day, I think we opted to not move forward with it. I think at this point, what I'd like to see is us take a major reset, just step back and work with the community, see what we really wanna do here, make it through, and come up with something that is a win-win for everybody. The town can retire the debt. The town can get a nice project. And if it's Palmer's project, I don't know. What we need is to slow down, just take a, a reset on this whole thing.
To go along with his debt, and I, and I wanna make sure, I know that most of, I'm not, I don't wanna take for granted that everybody remembers what the original sale included land-wise in this episode. So just so you're completely clear for all of you out there, this sale was not just Heron Creek or Heron Park, that poultry plant. The sale is also a parcel on Flower Street. You know that green space? So if you didn't...
When, when the town acquired it.
Right, right, when we originally acquired it, which is a part of that original debt. So, when we perp, is that, I'm, I'm...
That's true.
So what I'm saying to you is, when you're factoring all of these things in, you need to know everything. You're thinking about what we're paying off, what we're selling, and what we originally purchased originally. So that purchase wasn't just Heron Creek or, or whatever, the Tyson plant, it wasn't just that. It was that green space on Flower Street that everyone now utilizes for parking when you go to events like the Memorial Day Parade, when you go to, um, Heron, um, to, to Henry, right, National Night Out, when you go to Henry Park for anything, and you're parking in that green space. That was included in the original purchase price.
Just to correct, um, the parcel that was included in the purchase is at the corner of Flower and Bay. It's the residential parcel that was...
And the green. Well, we're on the other side.
A little bit like that, but...
But it's, it's part, it's part of it, was, all of it is not the Tyson plant. Part of it was, part of the original purchase was over there on Flower Street with the initial intent that, well, the thought was at the time to you, that, that would be a part of a community center project. So, just to give you a piece of history on that original purchase, not to take away from any of this, but to give you more information so that you have a better understanding of what all was purchased.
The other point I think that's worth noting is, like, like Councilmember Ner, I think that, and I have to, I have to give you credit, since you've been on the subcommittee, you have held strong to the, the paying off of the debt service. I, I give you credit there. Uh, you haven't deviated on that. Uh, but the, the debt service, I think it's important to note that the town is not selling all of the parcel of Heron Park. We're still retaining the lagoon area, the area where, uh, the proposed amphitheater is here on this drawing. It's worth noting that the parking spaces in our negotiation have been slated as open to the public without restriction. Um, I think all those things are very worthwhile points to make and make sure that everybody knows.
And you'd still be keeping the green space on Flower Street?
Correct.
I'm not saying I wanna do the Palmer, or the, excuse me, the deal that we're talking about, but I need you to understand what we're selling or what they're proposing to sell, and what you're, what you'd still be left with that would go along with the debt.
And the other side of that is, is that, I, I started with saying that the committee's goal has been to explore two possible viable options. One is to go with a design with Coastal Venture Properties, what you see here. Another is an alternative, which we've all kept in, in the forefront as we've negotiated, the option that the town retains all of this and says, "Thank you, but no thank you." And we demoed that building ourselves. Now, the caveat to that is that half a million dollars to demo the building, we don't truly know how much that's gonna cost to get it to great. We don't. We don't have the experience to be able to say that. We do have engineers on contract to be able to develop that RFP, but it's very possible that it could cost more to go to great, which is where we would have to go. And I've said that to the subcommittee members all along the way, that if we say thank you to Coastal Venture Properties and, and take a different route, we need to be prepared as a town to get that site ready for building, whatever we choose to do. And it's very possible that it could exceed $500,000, which would come out of the town's general fund offers. But that's speculative, we don't know. We've had varying quotes for the demo, and the bids themselves included different costs associated with demolition. So it's a big unknown for us, but at the end of the day, I don't think anybody up here wants to leave that DHCD grant untouched. We are going to do something with the demo. That is, that is not even a, a discussion item. The, the thing that we're trying to explore is whether the council, with input from the public, uh, would like to continue the negotiations with Coastal Venture Properties. The clock is running out on our ENP, but I think we could very well, uh, button up these contract items to have a true discussion with a contract that the public can review and say, "Hey, look, that's not the way we wanna go, and we wanna go this way." Or, in fact, that is the best possible option. Because I do agree with Councilmember Ores and Councilmember Ner, that right now, some of those items, you don't really know what's in there, right? And I'm a, I'm a stickler for respecting, uh, negotiations as negotiations. I, I try to keep things in their place, um, but I, I think that the two outstanding items remain the purchase price and the, uh, the length of specific commercial activity on 410.
So, I don't wanna double dip, cause I wanna hear from Councilmember Green, and I wanna hear obviously from the public, but I've been sitting on this egg for like two weeks. So, um, all right. We've all been involved with Heron Park for seven years back to when it was Berlin Falls Park. As a town, we've thrown an advisory committee, a dedicated staff person as a project manager, numerous hours cleanup, efforts of countless residents and staff throughout the years, and of course, financial resources at this property. So now we've decided to explore selling portions to a developer through the RFP and extended negotiation processes. So full disclosure, even in the days of Berlin Falls Park Advisory Committee, my colleagues will remember, I personally prefer to see the old chicken plant building demoed, and receiving the demo grant was a deep music to my ears. Also, I'm not sure anyone was more pro-sale than me. The overall vision is impressive with a town on road, parking, and things that we've talked about today. Uh, throughout the months of meeting as a subcommittee, we developed a package to present to the council and public, um, in, in order to have a better and complete picture. In the end, I walked away thinking we had a pretty good proposal in principle. So I'm not gonna rehash it, but essentially, time goes by, terms seem to deteriorate, specifically the sales price, and the original verbally solid terms to put to paper were no longer agreeable, and a total of three times, counteroffers were presented from the developer, ranging from things as the sale to amenities on the property. And to be clear, I wanna make sure this is actually not to put anyone in a negative light. It, it really is not. But I do feel like I sent earlier a responsibility to the public to present what has happened in my view and in my opinion. I also don't want us as a town to be in a position of making an error in process. If there was real or perceived an issue with the original purchase, I don't want us to go through the same pathway in terms of trying to sell it. Berlin is better than that. Uh, I am only one vote, but due to the repeated back and forth on the price, the rapidly approaching deadline for the grant, and the rationales that we've talked about and I stated, I am of the opinion to not move forward with this sale and direct the Heron Park disposition and development discussions to both our parks and planning commissions. I'd like both bodies to discuss, as they are deemed appropriate and with announced public comment opportunities, to prepare a report and recommendation to this body. During that time, and including in their discussions, included in their discussions, we move forward with our grant and demo the old chicken plant as well as any auxiliary buildings as the grant funding allows. And then, I'm done.
Yeah, just a couple procedural questions. Does Mr. Gillis, did he, was he informed that the subcommittee was gonna make a recommendation against moving forward tonight?
He was informed that we were going to have a discussion with the council, just keep in mind, we, the subcommittee cannot decide to stop the negotiations with anyone that's not within our purview. Only the entire council can do that. So, we've explained to Coastal Venture Properties that it would be a discussion item this evening. As I mentioned a moment ago, I, I try to respect the negotiations as negotiations, we wanna have a discussion, but, um, the exact specifics of what was going to be discussed, I, I didn't know what they would be exactly, uh, so we tried to just give him a heads up that, or them a heads up that we were gonna have this discussion.
Right, gotcha. Now, just, just trying to get to the bottom of the process really, quite frankly, um, you know?
And I will note that in that message, uh, the town attorney and town administrator and myself were, uh, having that conversation with Coastal Ventures.
And the subcommittee, um, it sounds like it wasn't, not a unanimous recommendation.
It was not.
Okay.
But, but let me, let me point out something that I think needs to be said in that regard. The committee was really made up of three members, Councilmember Boris, Ner, and the mayor. But under our charter, only the Councilmember Boris and...
That's true.
And Jay have a vote.
That's true, so then I guess it was unanimous. But it's a subcommittee, so I don't know how that flows either, but I guess it was unanimous. No matter how you look at it.
I also thought, look, we did take a vote on the subcommittee during it was to talk to Coastal Ventures.
It was to have a conversation with Coastal Ventures to bring them up to speed that we would be discussing it as a group. We did not believe, and this was after conversation with the town attorney and everybody, and I think we even said it on our call, we don't have the ability to stop that as a subcommittee. It really has to be decided here. That's where it lies.
We like that.
Yes, so we couldn't say to anybody, "Hey, look, we're done," and that's, that's the deal.
I think it was to let him know of the thought process.
Exactly, that's what I'm trying to get at. Boy, for a year's worth of work, it would be nice to have a contract to review.
And I will note that I think we're two points away from a contract, so it's not like with a year's worth of work, we don't have a draft. We do have a very solid draft, uh, I think that's well-trained.
Sure. Yeah, and I just, I mean, I'm prepared, you know, going through a lot of negotiations every time, and there's ups and downs, you run up the road, come back on the road, and, I've, I've worked across the street from that property for 30 years, so I certainly have a lot of opinions about it. And a lot of, you know, I mean, I, you know, chase the chicken all the time across the road.
I had a few pet chickens.
Imagine jokes on the chicken house, so... So, I think we could all agree that the status quo is unacceptable, the passive area. Um, I go back there, walk, um, bike, um, I'd even like to see that approved some as well. I think, I would assume that we're all on the same page that we want something down to that property. Uh, I guess I'm just a little bit concerned about the process of a year's worth of time. Um, you know, we're really, it sounds like $200,000 apart from a contract, and it's how that $200,000 would appear in the contract. Um, you know, we were never gonna retire the debt, ever. I mean, that wasn't gonna happen. Um, so I'm just a little bit confused, I think we knew that, that the RFP said 1.5 million, um, but, um, I know they have a lot of opinions, but I really would like to hear from the public because, you know, I've been reading a lot of comments, and I do think Mr. Gillis should be given an opportunity as well to talk to the, um, the council, the full group. Um, so that, I definitely have some other things to say, but I really feel at this point, I would like to hear from folks that are here, besides everybody else.
I actually think that's why we included that as a, as a line. So if everybody's okay with it, we'll open up the public comment. So anybody that would like to approach the mayor and council regarding public comment, and whoever wants to come forward, or just name or street name, and I can assume if the, if the, yes, please, if the item differs from Heron Park, please say so, if not, we'll soon get all comments related.
I'm Patricia Doofenbach, I reside with 3rd Berlin Street here in Berlin. I am also a member of the Parks Commission, I'm here on behalf of Michael Wyler Gaskin, and also Sarah Cooper, who's, we're obviously very interested in the disposition of what is now known as Heron Park. I, of course, my, the question that I have been trying to answer ever since we started these negotiations is, if we sell it, would we be able to put a skate park in this, or is that off the table for Heron Park?
So, the, right now, it's an amphitheater there, and then, uh, that could certainly be other...
Is that, no? If the, if the property is sold...
This is a draft, so...
I'm just saying, if these laws are gone, does that eliminate the potential for a skate park at Heron Park? Okay, so we should not be even, according to this, we would not be discussing a skate park at Heron Park.
You mean, we meaning the Parks Commission, right?
We meaning the Parks Commission, because people ask us all the time, and I know there are many people here who are interested in skate park. We have been trying to grapple with this, offer solutions, try to work, and try to understand. I don't know, if you remember when we first purchased the thing, a lot of people thought that would be a great place for a skate park. Um, and I was one of those people. I thought it would be a great place to...
If I can, I mean, if I can jump in, my personal thought, thinking on it was that if, if a sale went through, we still have, if I understood correctly, we still had area to the, to the north there, um, which would be kinda at the bottom, almost at the bottom of the hill.
Oh, okay, so, oh, all right, so, see, that's what I'm, I'm very confused about where all of this property is, it's being sold. So you're saying here would be a potential...
In my vision.
In your vision?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's, that's good, I don't know the square footage and all, and that would be an important piece of information that I think that many people would want to know, if there's still that possibility. Because we, we would like to have a little bit of, you know, fun up at that park too.
Yeah, in my, in my opinion, a lot of the... But I, I kind of envisioned that area, and maybe a little bit over to where the old...
I'm also curious, I know that, um, interest rates have been up and down, and I'm not certain what our interest rate is on our, our debt that we owe now, um, but I do want that to be carefully monitored if our, if, if the interest rate of, is, of the inflation, the inflation rate is going up, I wanna be sure that we're not paying off a debt that's less costly, you know, I wanna be sure we get the bang for the buck. Or where is all that money gonna go? I like your idea, Jack, that you, where is the money gonna go? Is it gonna go to the parks to improve the parks, perhaps renativize the, uh, Heron Park, which that would be getting rid of Bartlett pears all over around there, turning it into a native paradise? Having a forest, uh, you know, a kind of a forest path to, what is that called? Um, forest rain, or you immerse yourself in a quiet place with nature? We could do that at this place. There's so many things that we have not had a chance to talk about. I just want to put that out there. I, I think it's great if we want more retail, if they're gonna pay money to the town to hook up the plumbing, if they're gonna pay money to the town, and all of this, you know, that it's gonna make the town rich, I, I, I'm all for it. This is gonna be the thing that's gonna make our economy really go, you know, really, so we have enough money to take care of all the parks and all of the employees and all of the police and other cares. And those are the questions that I wanna have answered.
I would just want to point out that in We Heart Berlin's consultant study that they funded, um, there is a design and a layout for, proposed skate park at Henry Park.
Here, here.
Parent Park.
Excuse me, Parent Park.
I have only seen the one that was at, um, Stephen Cater Park.
Gotcha.
And seen all the other things.
So maybe Mr. Wee.
And, and that's what we're going to be discussing probably at our Parks Commission meeting, which is going to be on July 11th, because July 4th is a holiday.
Thank you.
And it is a public, open meeting.
Thank you.
Point of clarification on the skate park vote that we talked about?
Just come forward, because it's hard for everybody to hear. So just name and street name, if you don't mind.
Ron Cassier, Walla Hill. Point of clarification...
Table, if you don't mind.
Point of, I don't wanna be here.
Mike, head of Mike.
Point of clar, clar, clarifications is that a site that you talked about, Jack, at the bottom of the hill, I would guarantee is a non-toddle weapons, and you wouldn't be fine in any skate park in there. And that's not a location that would be approved by the state.
Just a point of clarification that we don't...
Tony, we don't afford, then we have all the concrete.
Tony Wade, St. Berlins, all, point of clarification...
Thank you, Ron.
In this plan, I think, you know, I don't know if you, you did a vote in the town, if we'd rather have a skate park, or we'd rather have an auditorium, how that, oh, I mean, uh, amphitheater. Well, our downtown is sort of our amphitheater, and I don't know if I ever wanna see music go away from downtown. So I think a skate park would be sort of better side, like the left side where the, where the path is now, sort of that left green area, yeah. As Steve said, there was a plan for that in there. So I think the space in front of the burn wouldn't work... So I think the space in front of the burn wouldn't work, but in this sort of situation where the amphitheater is, it would work.
Now, Ron, is that the same type of?
Different area, different space.
Just name and street name, please.
Edward Hammond, South Main Street. There's a whole lot to say and not a lot of time to say it, so I'm gonna skip points that I consider to be pretty important in the interest of time, but I think that reflects the lack of public dialogue that we've had on this. We opened this meeting with kind of a bizarre happening. Right now, Mr. Gaskell and I are fighting before the open meetings board of the state of Maryland with the mayor and the town of Berlin arguing vociferously that they cannot open meetings to discuss Heron Park because they don't have a completed contract. And then the mayor appears on Saturday on Facebook and appears here at this meeting and says that we must open meetings in order to discuss Heron Park. Well, which is it? You can't simultaneously argue to the state that you must close the meetings because discussing Heron Park and all the little details that have come out now would somehow impair the town's ability to negotiate, and then simultaneously, before 2,000 residents in the Facebook group and everyone who's watching or attending this meeting, say that you must discuss this in public. That's nonsense. So that's the first thing about this that I want to say. The second is that I don't consider this to be a proper session of taking public input on Heron Park. We have heard a few gargled details about what's in this prospective agreement. Some interesting issues have been raised. Today I learned that the town of Berlin is apparently undertaking to construct and operate an amphitheater. This has been discussed before, but whether it was in the towns or something like that, that's very interesting to me. And I think there are a lot of issues that go with it. The mayor has described two outstanding issues that are not settled in the negotiation, but the mayor has not described all of the other issues that are in the negotiation that are valid, important, and really potentially, yeah, very important for the future of Berlin. So to sit before us and to say, oh, well, we only have these two issues to work out, let's continue. No, excuse me. As a resident and taxpayer of this town, I want to know not just what you haven't agreed on, but I want to know what you have agreed on to see if it's something that I would agree with and I would support. So these are not comments on your proposed agreement, because you haven't given us a proposed agreement to look at and to digest. But to sort of illustrate the kind of thing that I'm talking about, but let me, I'm gonna back up a minute here. The whole RFP process seemed kind of fishy to me from the start, because RFPs define deliverables. RFPs define things that a governmental body has decided that it wants. Our RFP in the town of Berlin was one that said, we don't know what the heck we're doing, please help us. Okay, that's not an RFP, at least not as I understand it. That's some other thing. That's like a hail mary cry for help, okay? So I don't understand what we did is actually having been, you know, a proper, a proper RFP. But the mayor campaigned on promises of transparency. And I was in regular contact with the town administrator at the time that the, that the RFP, or so-called RFP, was issued. And the town administrator, the then-town administrator, was, promised me that this is gonna be done in the open and this was gonna be done transparently. And then what happened was something that was completely different. And now, at the third stage, so you, and Mr. Gillis called me and told me that he was already negotiating with the mayor before the RFP was issued. So this is nonsensical to me, and I don't think that any sort of proper procedure in terms of collecting public input, assimilating it, and deciding how to proceed has been done. But, so I earlier said, so, Mr. Mayor, I gave you the benefit of the doubt, because you were young, energetic, promising transparency, and the administration of the town said, we're gonna be transparent. And then you weren't. And even today, the town, you were saying, we must be, we must meet in the open about this, but you're also saying to the state of Maryland that you must close these meetings, so it just doesn't make any sense to me. But to sort of, I have two more points. The first is, so why am I interested in the things that you've already agreed on? Well, because they're important. What about the toxic waste that's there? We know that they're, we know that there are pollution messes at that. What's in the contract? What happens if Mr. Gillis buys this land and then finds something? Who's responsible? Is he gonna sue us? Are we gonna sue him? Are we gonna sue the former owner? I mean, you know, what does the contract say about this? This is something that is, you know, potentially a huge liability, right? The amphitheater was on my list of things to raise before we got here, but then I understand from the comments that you guys made that it's going to be a town amphitheater. Okay, well, how are we gonna fund that, okay? Because when I think about a town amphitheater in that location, I think of this. I think that if the town is not there and operating the amphitheater and ensuring that there is sort of quality programming, let's say, that, I'll just be kind of blunt here, that the alcohol industry is gonna be what comes in and takes over the amphitheater, and they're gonna want to have in the amphitheater whatever sells the most booze. And I think that there's already a place in Worcester County for being drunk in public and, you know, shaking your boobs around a tank top, and that's called Ocean City. It's not called Berlin. So if, so if we're gonna, if we're gonna operate an amphitheater, which apparently is a decision that you're undertaking in this, in this contract, why the heck haven't we talked about? Like, you know, wow, well, where's the budget gonna come from? How are we gonna do this? You know, how are we gonna ensure that, you know, we can have stuff that's suitable for adults and we can serve beer there, but let's, let's make sure we're not gonna really go in the wrong direction here. And as, as Mr. Burrell has repeatedly raised this point, and I heard him a long time ago raise this, it's really important. Have you studied the impact on existing businesses, right? What, what would these developments do? So the, so there's, so just hearing from you Zach about the existing unresolved issues doesn't resolve my set of concerns about this at all. And I think that the process has been mishandled.
So I, I think we're up to five minutes more, so if we can wrap it up.
Final point, final point. What I think that needs to happen here is that we need to thank Mr. Gillis for his proposals and for his engagement, and I'm sure that he has spent quite a bit of time and energy investing in this. And, and that's to be, best to be thanked, and that's to be, you know, sort of, we should be grateful for that. By the same token, I have a draft points or terms of reference for what I think should happen, and that should be a town committee composed of people from the town who have experience in land development. We need to go in there and create a sort of blank sheet, new zoning and plan for how we're gonna use the area. And I think that we should put that group on a tight leash in terms of time, because I'm with everybody, but this has to end. And, you know, we need to resolve this quickly. And I think that through that sort of process, the point where we wind up might be one in which we can reengage Mr. Gillis or other potential builders or developers who want to do things once the town has pre-approved parcels that will be much more valuable than the land as it stands today and potentially get us out of the debt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Whoever would like to go first?
Just real quick, because Mr. Hammond actually covered this a bit. Do you know the Long and Traveled Lane? I was, wasn't sure how Mr. Gillis actually won that bid or won that conversation, because Nuttley's actually offers a better deal, and now it's very disappointing to see that the council went in this direction, because now I'm getting ready to watch homes be built in our park, which is something that is gonna violate that space. Their project would have given us those parcels, that would have given the place for Tony to be skate park. It also could have provided a dog park. It could have provided a pervy, an impervious surfaced parking area. You know, it's, you know, nixing the issue with the skate park taking parking because we need that badly. And we dismissed it, like, quickly. Now we're using Mr. Gillis, and I like Mr. Gillis, but he's not doing pro bono work here. He's doing it for profit. And I don't think we need to jump on board. It doesn't rid us of our debt, and I'm so glad you slept to your guns on that. We'll be responsible for apparently all the infrastructure. I thought it was just the roads. We'll have to eventually provide lighting back there, because anybody riding on those roads are gonna deem it unsafe. Now you're starting to dig into a toxic waste area. Like, I'm sorry, it was Tyson Food Plant for how many decades? It wasn't like, you know, we had stringent codes back then, and they were a good job provider, so it wasn't like we investigated much. So at that point, the other thing is, we'll have to then go to the state to beg them for sidewalks and hopefully a traffic light, because that traffic's gonna be insane. Eventually, we'll be also hit with the soft costs, because now you're gonna have to have increased police protection, increased public works, all in that area, because it's gonna be a new retail site. And added of that is then we're gonna have Ivy, who does very well with her economics, but she's gonna come back and say, hey, we gotta promote the new second Main Street. I think we need to increase our budget. So once again, 70% of your tax base are the people who own the homes. And now you're tapping into the pockets with soft costs again, into that 70%. It's exhausting, and it's embarrassing that you keep coming to us asking us to open our purses up, because that's what's gonna happen. We keep doing and plowing through these sales, just like Heron Park started, to be this albatross that keeps taking. You're gonna come back to us and say, well, we need to increase the budget for this purpose and that purpose. I don't see where it benefits residents. I think it takes away from Main Street. We have focused enough time and energy on that. I don't think we need a second Main Street. So with that being said, obviously I'm against it, and it's nothing against Mr. Gillis. He has a great thing. But we have stormwater maintenance issues. We have all these problems. And now that the builder that once offered that parcel is gonna build, now we're gonna have more stormwater management issues. Because an impervious surface in an already tidal and flood area is not gonna do anything to help 113 pour the existing park that's underwater half the time. And by the way, the new pack that we just spent a bunch of money on is already coming up from the roots. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to address the mayor and council? Just name and street, street name or who you represent?
I promise I won't shake my boots.
Palmer Gillis, in a two-top, and Sandy Gillis, 3501 South Canal Street. And yes, I live in Ocean City. I'm from Salisbury. We spend a lot of time in Berlin and love this town. So I think, I just kind of wanted to clarify a few things, because I thought we were still in a negotiation process. I did not know, we did not know, that there was a, that the committee had decided against this proposal. So this is brand new to us. We're kind of called cold. So let's start with the first two items, which were the restrictions. I've said many times, and I'll say again, that restrictions devalue property values. Ask any lender, ask Joe Moore, ask anyone who knows anything about real estate. When you apply a series of restrictions, you lower the value of the real estate. I did this business, so I know that Mr. Burridge would probably agree with the same thing. On regards to the price, you all had suggested $1.7 million up from $1.5. We didn't have a problem with that. What we were trying to do is jumpstart the pedestrian trail and the amphitheater, the public entertainment venue. We had met with the Art Link of Ocean City, and if the town is willing to embrace their process, we offer to you all a testimonial from them. They need more venues to provide arts for a community. And there's one thing I've learned in my 40-year career of saving and working downtowns, which I believe in, in Berlin. Performing arts, the visual arts, and the culinary arts are keystones to economic development. And I can sit here and tell you that there is no ounce of my body that would want to do anything to this precious downtown council member, Burrell. It just, this is not my nature. Please call me up, call me out on it, call us out on it. It's not in our, it's not in our veins to do that. As far as the uses go, again, when you restrict uses, you devalue properties. We have proposed in this, a public entertainment venue. We had proposed managing it ourselves to begin with. The town, the committee decided they wanted to do it themselves, so we stood down on that factor. We'll be glad to do that again. I don't see that as an expense. We have leveraged this type of facility in two instances specifically that relate to public improvement, and that's with the bandstand downtown Salisbury Park and also the Art Institute Gallery in Salisbury, which leveraged hundreds of thousands of dollars of other grants. We can do the same thing here, and I think if you listen to some of the folks in economic development, this can be leveraged. The skate park? I don't understand why it's not here. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, this is where the skate park needs to be, but I don't want to get into another controversial discussion, but the skate park should be here. And there's, let's please keep in mind that of the original purchase that the town made in this property, you're retaining 70% of this, 70% of this. The RFP process, we only came to this when there's some conspiracy thought that we have some secret negotiations going on. This is a process that's done in almost any community that I've ever worked with, and I've been doing this for a long time. We read in the local magazines, tabloids, newspapers, whatever you want to call it, about the public process of Heron Park, which was now named at that time. So there's been a lot of public discussion on this project. Our company, Gillis Builders, Gillis Gilperson, we did a lot of the construction there, so I know this project like the back of my hand. So I'm like, we did a successful project on a 200,000-square-foot building in Easton, Maryland. We've made the community happy. The project has been a huge success. It's medical offices, please let me just go ahead and do medical offices here, but you're restricting my use. You're getting me out into a high-risk, with 10 interest rate increases, a high-risk market, which we are willing to take that risk. Downtowns, I just want to underline again, council member Burrell, please, if there's anything that you think that we may be doing specifically, I will stand down on that, because it just is not in my blood to jeopardize this Main Street right here. It's dear in our hearts. As far as the committee's got, the demolition, okay. So when there was a comment made about Nuttley's proposal being better, I can say to you, in Nuttley's proposal, for the whole parcel, the whole parcel, they wanted all the demolition done by the town. And I can tell you, if there's anybody that has gone behind that stockade fence, it will cost you a whole lot more than $500,000. We built a lot of it. The comments been made about get it down to grade. Well, it's not, you can't stop just at the grade. You have to go below the grade. You have, you have structural foundations on some of those sections behind the stockade fence that will cost this town hundreds of thousands of dollars. Say what you want, I'm just reporting the facts. Some people don't want to hear the truth, but it's gonna cost you a lot more than $500,000. The environmental cleanup items, we have, we have exploited that. The town has been doing their due diligence and presenting information to us regarding the environmental things that have gone on there. We feel comfortable with this process, but I can assure you that one of the conditions that we've talked about with the town is that I can't go to a bank without a current Phase II environmental audit. That is contingency in our contract. I mean, that's, that's just a fact. I have to prove that. But I'm not gonna go spend the tens of thousands of dollars to do that and the traffic study and all the other studies that go into this, which will cost probably nearly 100 or maybe more thousands of dollars until we have some type of commitment or some type of least path forward with the town. There's been discussion about taxes. Well, right now, this property's not generating any real estate taxes. Well, right now, this property's not generating any real estate taxes. When you convert the use to a private sector, you will be generating...
We're getting up on the five-minute mark.
You'll be generating income taxes. 70%. Stormwater management. We have to comply with the state of Maryland environmental requirements, and that's for quality and quantity for stormwater management systems. So with that said, we will comply with all that. We've made provisions in this schematic drawing for stormwater management and management of stormwater management for quantity and quality. Those are some of the points. I'll be glad to answer any questions. Sandy, would you like to have any?
I just have a question, Mr. Gillis. I just have a question. This is the original RFP that you submitted?
Yes.
Yes. And it was for 1.5?
Yes.
Correct? Was that 1.5 cash?
Yes. Well, when you say cash, I don't know what that means.
Well, was it, was it a million and 500, or $500,000 grant?
That was included in, that's very clear in that, it's included in that.
So the offer was actually done?
If you want to say it that way, yes.
But, but it's worth saying, the $500,000 is not ours. If we don't use it for demo, it goes back to the state. So the only, the only way, just to be clear, well, I think in that document, and correct me if I'm wrong, they have a gas rule, in the RFP submission, it says that they would like to use up to the $500,000 mark of the demolition.
Right. And we'll be responsible for anything beyond that, which is different than what Natale's proposal was. Assuming the town wants 78 homes on that site, respectfully, I don't know that the town wants that. I know that the croppers probably don't, where they fire up their diesel equipment at 3 o'clock in the morning.
All right. I do want to...
So I'm respectful of the time limit. Any other questions?
I would like to address, I believe we have one more hand up for public comment.
I want to write for, Mr. Gillis said that it was a conspiracy theory, that there were secret negotiations, but members of the group that are on the town council said at this meeting that they met many times. The town attorney said that there were three closed sessions to discuss this on the town council. It is not a conspiracy theory that there have been nearly two...
I'd like to...
May I respond to that?
No, let's not get into, I've not had to use this gavel for anything other than opening up a public hearing. I'd like to keep it that way. Let's entertain anybody else that would like to speak regarding public comment. And I will say that, I think that you've had five minutes and that there are other options for other folks, as well as anybody else.
I do want to make ourselves available for any questions because there's no intention to have these deeper things here, which this is great, we're just...
Up next, just name and street name if it's applicable or business that you represent.
Adam and Julie Porche, East Main Street, Frostburg, Maryland, other side of the state. Mayor, council, my wife Julie and I own a rail bike outfitting business. We have, we're located in Western Maryland. We've been trying to expand here to Berlin for about the last six months. We've had trouble finding anywhere to start, start our trips from that would give us applicable parking without interfering with the town's parking congestion. We have proposed to the, to the city and to the council to utilize some of the parking available at the southwest corner of that property that's adjacent to the railroad tracks at Heron Park. I'm not sure what one of those lot numbers it is, but southwest corner in Ocean City Boulevard. About half of that parking actually is within the railroad right of it, which we already have a lease with. So, you know, our rail bike excursions are a, you know, they try to come to Berlin and bring, they bring an amusement and admission tax, one of the few taxes that goes right back to the community. We project, you know, at least 25,000 by year two to go back to the county and, and the city of Berlin, paid to the state and the controller takes it back to you. So, you know, with that, with that being said, what we're looking for is to preserve the past and empower the future by using those railroad tracks and looking for, you know, to utilize some of this parking that's available on that southwest corner, open to the public without restriction. And we don't have a year to study it. If we can't open up here by July 14th, we're going to need to move on. And I feel, you know, there's been, obviously these negotiations have been taking place and so my requests, I think, were kind of maybe put on the back burner, we can't even think about that. Which I think even if it were to go to sale, there's plenty of synergy with the developer and ourselves to bring, bring us and we can work, work with him as well. But I just want to put that on the record that that, that's where we're at. We'd love to open up here in three weeks now, but we need, I guess, a blessing or an understanding that being the public law and what the sign says would be available for, for our patrons to park there in what seems to be an underutilized public city parking lot.
Anyone else that would like to address the council? Please just name and street name, if you don't mind.
Marie Delonge, 400 West Street. I haven't really planned on this, but one of my issues is the fact that you have said that there's only two options. We either accept this offer or we demolish it and keep it. There is a third option. You demolish it and sell the whole thing. That's where we would get our money back. And the idea that the nature trail, to me, if it's, if it's that popular, the county or the state should have something to do with maintaining or money towards keeping that as a nature area. It shouldn't be just on the town of Berlin. We would get our money, the, the real estate values are going up, they're not going down. So it's not like you're going to lose money weighted either. It seems like we didn't know about the infrastructure and who's, how is that getting paid? Who's paying to have the roads put in? Where is that in our budget? That's, that's a big problem for me. To me, we can't get my road fixed now and you're going to go take on another project and put in new stuff there and tell me that you can't spend $4 million or $2 million or whatever it is, and it's not just my street. You have other streets all through Berlin that need work, not this area. This area has sat for 10 years. It could sit for 10 more. It'll be still worth whatever it is worth now. This whole discussion is based on the fact that it has to be done. What should be done is you accept that stupid grant for $500,000, get that building down, and then go from there. I think that man with the rail thing would be making use of that property while you do figure this out. But to, to put this on a schedule of it has to be done now is just absurd. I've been making notes the whole time. I can't believe that through seven years of pondering Heron Park, you never got a price on the demolition of that building. That it would be any kind of a surprise now how much it would cost. As to the skate park, my objection there has always been lack of visibility. A skate park is going to attract children. Children need to be supervised. There is no visibility to the road from there. Stephen Decatur Park was the place to put it because you have the police department right there. It has access to emergency care. I mean, these are practical things that are getting lost in the natural area of green space and all of these things. I want Berlin to be the town that I lived in, the small town, not the coolest small town in America. I want it to be a small town that I lived in that was quiet and nice. We can't park anywhere now? What you're doing is ruining the atmosphere. I don't know who decided that we needed a public entertainment venue and where these people are going to come from to that place and where are you going to put them? We can't handle the events we have now. There's no parking. And all of this is being based on Berlin and compared to Salisbury. We are not Salisbury unless that's what you're aiming for. If that's what you're aiming for, you're going to lose a lot of people because they didn't come here for that. The other thing about the skate park, you have no accessibility from 113 over. The, you would need to have sidewalks because you're going to have kids coming from everywhere. Purnell Crossing, you have kids there coming. You're going to need sidewalks there. I mean, you have to get to the basics here and that's what, only reason I agree with Ed Hammond having a committee is it's obvious that even with the Parks Commission and whatever else planning, nobody has looked at these things to see where they're going with this project. And it's been on the books for a long time. That's all I have to say. I just am very disappointed. And I hope you do not go with this.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address the mayor and council? Name and street name, please.
Hi, Jamie Dunstons, Kinneland. So I don't believe we should go through this agreement for multiple different reasons. I think that we're taking too much of a risk with this $200,000 that could be put towards things that, you know, that don't go towards our debts. And that's a serious issue because we have a lot of debts to fill. And there were discussions earlier about the interest rate for debt and I'm, you know, I'm not quite sure if that builds over time or if it's a stagnant rate. But if it does build, then this is something that we have to tackle in the now. I think we are a desirable town and a desirable location. And if we do tell coastal ventures, hey, sorry, we're going to have to go something else, we're going to get better deals. We're going to be competitive, we're going to be good for the town and, you know, we're going to get money for the town. I would like to see something a bit more community oriented. Of course, that's just my personal opinion and maybe this is a pretend credit, but that is just what I would like to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address the mayor and council?
Hi, Mary Hippleski, West Street. And I've just got some questions on the matter of it. When, when did we purchase, was it like seven years ago we purchased Heron Park?
2016.
Okay, so say seven, seven years ago. So we purchased it for 2.5 million? Okay, and the offer, like just dealing with what we have in the room, I'm listening to all this stuff, trying to do the math in my head. I'm not keeping up with it. Okay, so right now we have an offer for $1.7 million and that's for 14 of the...
Yes. Yes. It's 1.7.
It's 1.7 million dollars and it's for 14 of, what is it, 63, 64 acres that will still be, belong to the town? Is that...
Seventeen acres, right? Sixteen.
Is it?
Forty-four remain.
Forty-four remain and you guys are taking what, 17? Okay. How much each year does it cost like to maintain this property as far as mowing and bug spray, whatever it is that we do up there? Does anybody know?
The debt service is $200,000.
So it's two, so...
The debt service...
The debt service is... One hundred and thirty is about $200,000. The original amount was 3 million, 2.5 was the property. The deed to the property was the additional on Flower Street, the corner of the lot. The deed is on the property of Heron Park only. Debt is on the property of the Heron Park. 2.5 was the purchase, 500 was set aside, and enough. So 3 million outstanding is over 2 million right now. It's fixed for 30 years. The questions are, what is the way of accumulating or not? It's been still in interest, fixed for 30 years.
And the debt service hanging away?
It's over $160,000 per year.
200, safest at 200,000.
So it's 200,000 for the...
The finance director says 116 a year.
Okay, but then you've got to know it and there's all kinds of other expenses that are, that the town is incurring. So the longer we hold on to this, the more in debt we're going to, we're going to keep going with this. And I'm not saying like jump on like any, I'm just trying to do the, like the number of it. It doesn't seem like, and it seems like it's been a long time that we've been talking about, I mean, ever since I've been coming here, this has been a discussion of what's going on. And I know people don't want to grow and they don't want to develop and I definitely would not want to see 78 townhouses down there. That's just not even where I would want to go. And Amphitheater, I think they bring a lot of good points, it's like, you know, what kind of, what kind of people are you going to bring into town? There's all kinds of questions, but just the numbers of it, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense for us to keep going back and forth and not coming up with some sort of concrete plan if this is costing us not only, you know, the cost of what the property itself, but we're caught, we're running up $200,000 a year on it. So I just think if we could like, instead of just everybody saying, yes, we got to do it this way or we got to do this and we got to do that, maybe everybody kind of sit down and do some kind of compromise, like, like with what Coastal, you know, Property Ventures is. Like say, okay, we like this part of it, but could we go ahead, you know, maybe get a subcommittee to work with them because they've actually been working with the property. And like you were saying, it's like behind the fence there, when we go to demo it, they're not going to dig down. It's not just going to be removing it. And I am no meat expert or whatever, but I was involved in some farm property and this was years ago in Montgomery County. And it was, it, there was processed meat on that property, processing meat on that property. It was somewhere between 30 to 50 years before you could put any kind of houses or anything on it. Now, I don't know if that's the way it still is or anything like that, but I think instead of just starting from scratch, let's not keep going backwards. Let's kind of take to the point of where we are and move forward with it. Instead of just, you know, we consider keep pointing fingers at each other, it's your fault, it's my fault, it's their fault, it's, I don't like this, I don't like that, you know? But at some point, we just got to kind of sit down and say, we got to do something. And I just don't think we're doing it here tonight.
But just to let you know the numbers, so we currently owe, I'd say 2.3, 2.4 on it. Palmer's offering 1.7, so that leaves you with six, you would make 600,000 or 700,000, yet now we have to build a road. That's going to cost a half a million, possibly a million, who knows? So like I said, nothing's going to help the debt.
Yeah. So, so no, I agree. I wouldn't want, but the thing is, it's not, it's not the full piece of property, it's only a part of it. And if we could figure out ways to use the rest of it, that we could generate income, that we cover that kind of stuff versus us just holding on to this piece of property and still just accumulating more and more debt on top of debt instead of it going anywhere. But that was just, I don't know, essentially just trying to add some numbers up.
And I think that was the goal of the entertainment venue because if you mimic what they did on the Freeman stage, it was free news bags and tickets and make money, generate revenue. That was the goal, but that was a long way off. Again, that would have to be built and processed.
I think we've hit the five-minute mark as well, but thank you. Anyone else that would like to address the mayor and council? Just name and street name or who you represent.
My name is Mayor Carey. I'm the, like the garden center area of this project. I live at 12527 Ocean Reef Drive in Berlin. I would say that I would have like an in-town address if, if Mr. Cassio would let me put Navy Blue siding on the house. He can take that up on my life, I guess. So I'm, I'm pretty happy, so. I, I've been an entrepreneur since I was 18 and I started in Delmar and I've done some really cool things there. Moved to Salisbury, that's where I actually met Palmer and I used to, in my early twenties, wanted to be like the younger Palmer, right? With some things that I'm doing because I really admire some stuff he's, he's done. Fast forward a couple of years and he still looks kind of the same and I'm like losing more hair and getting more gray, so I think I'm catching up to him. But I, I've done some restoration projects... But I've done some restoration projects in Salisbury with buildings and had a lot of success with them. I have a passion for nostalgia. And I think honestly, that's a big reason as to what drew me to Berlin a few years ago to live. When I come here with my family, it's special. It really is. And I want to be a part of it. I own a landscaping business as well. And that's kind of where the garden center idea came to fruition. That was what I started as a way to pay for college. And now, like, since I've been in Berlin, I've tried to make a big impact. We currently maintain Worcester Prep's grounds. We do work for Palmer. We do landscape architecture and design for Blue Order Group. We're doing some install work for them as well. So we try to make a stand. We do, you know, other work in the area. And I'm building houses here in Berlin as well, in Walnut Hill. So I'm very passionate about everything that I do. This is an idea, a concept, that I took to Palmer probably five or six years ago. I saw a need, a lot of my work, you know, coming from Salisbury. We're coming to the beach, Berlin area, almost on a daily basis. And this garden center, to me, like-- It's tough to explain, but Berlin, to me, is almost like a real-life Mayberry. That's what I, you know, coming as like an outsider in. And everyone, like, I'm a big, like-- And Delmar is a little bit of the same, like, small town. Everyone waves to everyone when you go by. And like, that's the vibe I get when I come to Berlin as well. So I think with this garden center, what the biggest purpose for me is just being a part of the community, being able to take a couple bushes to the Miss Anne that lives on Berlin Street because she called in and asked if she's not capable of coming and getting them. You know, selling local produce, having a place that someone can go and get topswell mulch, anything for their admin projects, help them design it if they need it. And, you know, have another place for families to go. Again, I have a five-year-old daughter, as of yesterday, a three-year-old son, and one on the way in, like, two months. So I have a family that I want to raise here, and I want them to feel what I feel in Berlin because it is a magical place. I respect the vibes and the what's here. I've talked to many people at length. And honestly, not to toot his horn, but Mr. Cassio, I've spoken with a number of times. And his passion for this town is what defines him, I think. And I've learned a lot from him through just the time dealing with him at Walnut Hill. And I want to carry that on. I mean, I looked, and I could be misspeaking, but I might be the youngest person here. Maybe by a couple of years, I'm not sure. But the-- I have passion for this thing, and I know that it can be successful. And I know that it could thrive and be a part of this town. I feel like it's been here for 50 years. And I think that was my goal with it. So, you know, and I will comment that working with Palmer through the years usually as a-- He's being my boss on the job, like, running the landscaping. He's giving me the freedom to do what I think looks best. And he is flexible and easy to work with. And from what I've captured from all of this, as I've been in the backseat of this ride for the last year and a half, it seems that, you know, that the town seems a little, like, disincluded from the process, and there's a lot of emotions involved in that. And it's not necessarily the project itself. And, you know, I think that this garden center would be a fantastic thing for the town. I would love to bring it here and truly be involved in a special way with the town for many years to come. And that's really what I want for my family and stuff as we continue to grow here. So, yeah, that's basically what I've got. Thank you.
One quick thing.
Just name and who you represent, and come to the table if you don't mind.
Do you want to go? I just have one quick thing.
She has five minutes.
Sandy Gillis.
It's girl minutes.
Our original plan did not include a road. We don't need a road in our plan. It was my understanding that the road was so the town could access the 44 acres that would remain part of the town. So, for the record.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address the mayor council? Name and street name, please.
Yep, hey there. I'm Tyler. I live on Williams Street right here. Thanks for giving me a minute. That wasn't planned. I'm talking. But I scribbled some things together. I would first like to say thanks to Public Works because the ponds portion of that is really well maintained. There are dozens of people there every day walking. And it's always a nice place to walk well cut and cut back along the edges of the pond. And that really makes a difference. And it really makes the area accessible. So important for me to note, I think. But something that Steve said earlier has led me to kind of grounded the conversation. I really think there's a missed opportunity here because we were asked to have a discussion, and you all were asked to have a discussion, the other council members, but there wasn't an organized, coherent, concise presentation about what the contract includes, what the negotiations were. It was all-- I thought it was strange that this fellow is really articulate. He made the RFP. He has to come up here and give some details. I feel like the council, especially the subgroup, could have made a presentation about pros and cons of each choice and discussed-- Because Jack was nice enough to trickle some details out, which was really nice. But I think there should have been a clear, concise presentation about what the debt service was that also came out only in dialogue. It wasn't part of the initial conversation and the initial transparency and initial disclosure. And I think those details should have framed the discussion, both for the council and for the public. So we wouldn't be getting herky-jerky parts of what's really being discussed here, right? And I also think part of that conversation should have been a distinct and articulate conversation about how much will it cost to remediate this property? Those kind of details are not finite because I also trickled out that there have been several estimates about that. What were those? Would be interesting to know. I believe Mr. Gillis's-- I believe in his knowledge about developing property based on all of his years. If he says it could be a million dollars, it probably could, right? But I think that to inform and frame a careful, clear, concise discussion about this topic, we've got to have all of these details, including what trickled out that it costs $160,000 a year, I think, just to have the property. Very important detail. The $500,000 for the-- I'm still not sure that-- Maybe this is a question, and maybe this is rhetorical in the context of I'm confused about so many things here, the details. Is that $500,000, the DHCD grant? Secretary Day, by the way, from Salisbury, which is exciting. But is that included in the sale price, or is that a standalone amount? But I really-- And there was talk about permeable surfaces. That would be really cool, right? Was that part of the RFP or not? Could it be or not? It seems like we have an RFP, we have the deal on the table, or we have, we can not do the deal or-- But are there negotiable parts of the deal still? Those are all good questions. I really think the three folks on the subcommittee could have had a work product for us, is what I'm saying. Another key thing that I'm wondering is the two folks, council members, who are, you know, against the sale. Why is that, right? What were the areas of concern? What were the-- And for the mayor, who seems to be for the sale, great. Why is that? What were the pros that the mayor thought would make it beneficial for the town to, you know, not have the property anymore? So I really think some more details would really help. And I really think the council doing more work to prepare more information for the community, for the community, like in the essence of, you know, show transparency would have been helpful. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the mayor council?
I have one thing I meant to put in my--
Just name, and you should really come forward. And I don't know where you are on time, but I don't think you had hit your five minutes.
It's-- Make your one and one, please. Okay. Blair Carey, 12527 Ocean Reef Drive. I did hear someone earlier make a comment on how this project could possibly impact, like, the existing downtown as far as existing business owners. I can't comment to those business owners, but as an entrepreneur and businessman myself, I've been trying to find a place in downtown Berlin to put my office for every year. And everyone that I talk to says there's a waitlist. So I've been trying. There is a need. And that's-- I just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address the mayor council? Just name, street name, or who you represent, please.
I'm coming from two perspectives. So my name is Megan Hines. I reside at 328 Buttercut Court. I also have commercial property. It's putting on Jefferson Street. And I'm coming at this personal, but also from a business owner's perspective. I wasn't planning to speak, but I figured I would give that. I didn't see any other business owners up here. So I did feel that the plan presented seems very fluid still. It seems like there's a lot of room for interpretation. And I don't feel like you can make a decision based on that fluidity. And as a resident, I'd like to see more details. I feel like it's a bit vague. I will say some of the things I don't think the town needs are more restaurants. I think we're oversaturated there. During the week, I go around pretty-- I'm there late at night and early in the morning, and the town is dead during that time. And then in the middle of the day, of course, we're very busy, and we do need things like parking. The restaurant and shops, that's something that I didn't love about this. Other parts I did. I really liked the idea for the skate park, amphitheater, having a lot of parking that we can use for shuttles and event space, arts. All of that was really valuable, but I really don't want it to draw away from Main Street. That's a place that I've spent a lot of time cultivating personally and a lot of other business owners there as well. From a personal perspective, I could see taking my family there. We were there in the last week. We went out to the park. I would like to see-- Not an eyesore, and I would like to see it taken care of. I don't think the town of Berlin can do that on its own. And of course, the Gillises have that wherewithal to be able to do so. And I think that's something worth taking into consideration. I don't think someone else is coming in with an offer that would be helpful. But I think some of the-- Some of the plans need to be more specific before you all can make a decision. One thing that wasn't brought up that I saw on the We heart Berlin is a way to make other revenue. And potentially a solar farm over the parking could be an option for that. I don't know. I am not an engineer. Just coming at that with an idea that I hadn't heard brought tonight. But putting solar over that parking or potentially an event space for things like weddings or concerts or things where you could generate money and recognizing that would take an event planner and personnel that might also create jobs, which would be ideal and also not draw away from what we already have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the mayor council? Whoever wants to go first.
I'll be quick. My name's Mark Servo. I live at 103 Sherwood Avenue. I just want to make a comment on the gal that was just up here. She mentioned something that I've been thinking about for a long time since this project has come up in this town. I've lived in this town for about 36 years now because I've seen a lot of changes. I would like to see something that is-- That happens with this piece of property that's beneficial for everybody that's lived in this town for, if it's one day, 10 days, 36 years, I don't care. But for something that everybody benefits from. And the idea of a solar farm, whether it be on top of a parking lot, is a great idea. It supplements our electrical power so we don't have to outsource for it. Fire company benefits. Schools benefit. This building benefits. Every resident in this town benefits. We use that property to help the people that live here. Yes, I understand. We need people to come visit. And that's a huge part of Berlin. But you also have to take care of the people that really support this town across the board, business owners and residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the mayor council? I believe we have two hands, but--
Thank you.
Go ahead. Just name and street name, please.
Bronwyn Betts, William Street. I just want to say thank you guys for giving us a lot more information than we've had because I think that was part of the problem why there's so much confusion on Facebook and helping people. And I really appreciated the details that you guys gave us and that Mr. Gillis gave us. And I, you know, I'd love to hear more detailed-- Even more details so that we could, you know, make a decision on what we should do there. I personally really love the park. And I know everyone says eyesore and this and that. But I love walking there, and I love the wildlife that's there. And my kids go sledding there. It's the only place to sled. It's a big deal to me and my kids. And I see, it's like it's resort. If it snows, which it didn't. And we missed it this year.
That's because we bought--
So, I mean, I just want to speak up for-- And I like what Patricia said about a natural space to go during COVID. That was a really big deal, to go and walk and be able to leave your house and be in nature. And I love Decatur Park. I love Little Pond. But it's really small. I mean, it doesn't really give you the feeling of being truly in nature. And I know that's not everyone's priority, but I think it's important. And I think it does bring something to the town that may not bring money immediately, but it does attract people. And it brings people birding, which is a big business. And lots of birders have lots of money because they have to to afford the binoculars and scopes and all that. So they go there, and then they go to eat, and they go to burly oak, and they do all these things. And this happens because I see them. So I just wanted to put that out there, and thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else that would like to address the mayor council? Just come forward, name the street name. You haven't exceeded your five minutes.
I tried. Ron Cassio, Walnut Hill. Palmer came to me, I don't know how long ago is that. It's been a long time ago. With, I think it's essentially the same thing that's on the table here. And wanting my support. And he did a really good job explaining what he wanted to do to me, to the town. And I thought about it a lot. I talked to other folks about it. I've talked to Blair. Since I've met Blair, I told Palmer that, from what I saw, if it was a good plan and a word for Berlin, I would support it. I have really nothing bad to say about this portion on the western side. Of course, I know a little about it, but from what I do know, I have no problem with that. I think a garden center-- And I would love to go to a garden center, like Blair was explaining, like that place over in Salisbury. I think there's a great things that the town should have and serve the town well. But I called Palmer maybe a week ago to tell him that, you know, I still stand by what I said, that I supported those uses that he proposed. The problem is the price. You know, that is-- We're talking about 17 acres of land. The largest contiguous piece of property left in the town limits. We own it. It's on a major highway. And we're talking about one and a half or whatever million dollars, okay? Let's do a simple comparison. Two houses sold in my neighborhood. They're on about an eighth an acre lot. They totaled close to the sale price of 17 acres on a major highway in town. Somebody needs to explain to me what-- How those values seem so odd. It's just that that property, as it sits, is worth a lot more money if we pay attention to it. We're withholding-- What's this thing with we're withholding? What's the other sticking point? Explain that to me. It's--
The time limit?
The time, yeah.
Yeah, the garden center would be mandated to operate for 10 years. If it failed, nothing else could be put in.
So why are we withholding-- What are we withholding? We're withholding an upzoning, correct?
The town--
The town, the subcommittee has negotiated no residential at all on any of the parcels, indefinitely.
So what we.
I'm trying to answer the question. The 10-year commitment to the garden center is just for a garden center on parcel 410. It would be zoned to fit that zoning, and then any changes, including the residential component, would have to be approved in public by the mayor and council. It's in the agreement as well.
Let me tell you what's going to happen after whatever time limit we put on. I've been on the planning commission for about 20 years. Sit right up there. When I first got there, the people that came to us, we knew them, we could work things out, you know. We knew Palmer, I'm sure we could work things out with Palmer too. But what we have now coming at us are people who don't live here, don't know us, don't know anything. All they know is, we want to make money. I'm not pointing to you, okay, because I know you're committed to the community. You too, Blair. But that means there's a huge demand for properties in town. This property could be made worth much more than the 1.7 million dollars. We're withholding the ability of him to essentially upzown. What's going to happen is him or his heirs or whoever else he may sell it to are going to come before us with a plan that will then fill out that check that we withheld from them. Now, we should be the ones, why are we the ones upzoning the property? Why are we withholding? Palmer said, you're taking away the value. You're taking away my values. Why are we doing that? We should be upgrading, upvaluing the property, not downgrading the property before we sell it. It's ridiculous, it makes no sense. I propose let something like Jackson, the parks commission, the planning commission, let me back up a bit. I'm a member of the planning commission. I'm not speaking for the planning commission, but I can tell you speak for the majority of the planning commission members. They are not for this deal at all. They firmly believe that the property is worth way more than the proposed sale cost. So what I think we should do is, there seems to be a lot of misinformation, a lot of misunderstanding, a lot of people who don't feel they've had their say. I think we should do like Jackson, and Hannity has proposed something where we have a committee, we had a committee where we were going to keep the property, we created a committee. Committee did really good work, they're coming up with some ideas. Biggest thing they discovered was we couldn't afford to do a darn thing.
We're going to pass the five-minute mark, so if we do.
Now that we decide we may sell it, why don't we create a committee of people in the community who are in the business of creating values and properties? There are people who live here, they work here, they own property here, they have the expertise to help the mayor and council and the people in town figure out what we want to do. Don't put the RFP out like you did now, you put the cart before the horse. Put it out there and you said, help me, what are we going to do? Why don't we put something out that creates value and then see what it's worth?
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the mayor and council?
With a couple of responders going over five minutes, can I have 60 seconds?
Yes. 60 seconds.
Mr. Cassio and I brainstorm a lot, and I love discussing with him on the site, the opportunities, and we, a big discussion here tonight is value. And I think one thing in my hour and 20-minute conversation with Mr. Cassio was, the value is established by what the market is going to pay. The town retained a third-party appraiser. The town put an RFP out now, in my opinion, having been through this before, this RFP that the town put out was a very, very, very public document, and the responses from Natale and ourselves was very, very public. So as far as value goes, you have three responders that have come up with a similar value. And I might want to add that back in the year of 2010, when you had a fully functioning poultry processing plant, there was a young entrepreneur, real estate agent in Salisbury, Maryland by the name of Brad Gillis, who had it listed for 1.9 million dollars. So when you're establishing value, there's lots of ways to point to it and establish it. And I will end by an editorial that was written about the town of Berlin a few years ago, that says, "My father often told me, failing a plan is planning to fail." And you've gone through this process now for well over, for several years now. It's time, it's great to plan, but every once in a while you have to implement. And I would suggest that you're going to lose, demolition is going to cost a lot more than $500,000, I'll bet money on that, but that being, if you take the whole property and take it down to low grade. But value has been established in a free and fair market process. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the mayor and council? Just name and street name, please.
I actually came for a different subject, and I'd sure like to address that if that's possible. My name's Debbie Cook, I live on South Main Street. I came to a council meeting several weeks ago, and I was really disturbed by the new forum, whereas we were not allowed to speak on subjects until the very end of the meeting. I thought that was very unproductive, and that the council has a new thing where they're not allowed to respond to us. It seems like tonight we threw that out the door. It's a very productive meeting, I think it was great, I hope this is a pattern. It's my understanding that it only takes a few of you to vote to reverse the new procedure, I don't know what to really call it, and I'm coming here to ask you to do that, for the citizens of Berlin. Thank you very much.
Anyone else that would like to address the mayor and council? I have notes I'd like to talk about with the group. I don't mind going first. I've heard things like a skate park mentioned. I will say that as a group, I don't think we've ever ruled that out. I would say as a subcommittee, I think that I'd speak for all of us, or at least the three members on the subcommittee, we never ruled out a skate park. I will say that Councilmember Wors has been firm on the fact that we do not call it an amphitheater, we call it an entertainment venue. And, but I don't think any of these things are set in stone per se, as far as what that venue will look like. I would also like to note that, I think Sandy may have said it, or Palmer, that you thought we were still in a negotiation. That's my understanding as well, is that we're still in a negotiation until this body disbands that process. So that is still my understanding. I do think that in the subcommittee, we've gone over a lot of different things, and one thing that I don't think, and maybe because of time, was mentioned by Coastal Ventures Properties, is that the repurposing of these buildings, it's come up time and time again, is designed to help keep those rents at a market rate that folks can enter into and not pay an exorbitant amount of new construction. So that's really, I think, one of the plus sides to renovating this building is accessibility for brachopodermos. Additionally, let's see. Give me a second. I think there was a question about sidewalks and lighting. I know it's difficult to see, I know that screen's a little far away, but sidewalks, lighting, bicycle, pedestrian accessibility, vehicular accessibility has been taken into consideration through this discussion process. I think one thing that also resonated, or that I heard a lot of, was that there's not enough information for the public to really opine or make an opinion on a path forward. And I agree with you, wholeheartedly. But I would also say, and I tried to start the discussion with making this evident as well, we're not at a point where we're really presenting something to the public for an opinion on this option, or that option, or a completely different option. This really is a discussion among the mayor and council of whether we should even continue in that negotiation process. And it has been the goal of mine, and I believe the goal of the committee at all times, that when we had a final proposal, right, because it's not even a set contract, when we had a final proposal to present, that those thorough presentations would exist, the opportunity for the public to ask a question about any particular part of this, or to pick apart the agreement would be there. I would also add that the other goal that I've clearly expressed to the group all the way along is that we need to have not just this plan that you see in front of you, but another plan, right? And that's whether the town holds this, whether we demo it, answering some of your costs about what would it take to be able to totally demo the building. Honestly, we've gotten married, you might even be able to speak on this better than myself. We've had, since 2016, folks that have come in and said, "We'll demo it for you so we can take the aggregate," to, it's going to cost you $600,000, $700,000 to demo. So it's been all over the place. What I tend.
That depends, I think, on the market, the construction market, the scrap market, whatever.
And what I can say with certainty is that if we demo it ourself to go at grade to a billable level, I think we're going to fully exhaust that grant. I don't see any residual leftover to return to that state. Now, let's see, I want to take this a little bit further. I think the idea of generating income, that's a great idea. I think that the one thing to note is that with this proposal so far, it does bring two parcels back on the tax rolls that we don't have currently. Parcel 57 and parcel 410 will be back on the tax rolls, adding to the accessible base. I think that's worth noting. I think that I've heard the town would like to be involved in the process, I agree. We're just in a negotiation process to try and bring something that you can say yes or no to. Miss something? The town did want the road, I think Sandy, you brought that up, and that speaks a little bit to your question as well, as to why we felt that that would be a town cost. I will say that Councilmember Nerv said that that would be a town expenditure. He is correct, that would be a town expenditure. However, we've even, and we've brought this up multiple times in the subcommittee group, we would want to explore the opportunity for street improvement grants, which exist, also through the Department of Housing and Community Development, who is funding the strategic demo. It does position ourselves in a more favorable position if we actually have something existing on the site that we're putting a road in for. Let's see. I think somebody said that it's going to be difficult for the town to do this on our own, and I fully agree with that. There was the idea of a solar farm, I think that's great. We've had other folks, even on other parcels of property, that have approached us about solar farms. There are some intricacies with that as it relates to what we can absorb on our own load and what those costs would be. Our electric utility director could speak more knowledgeably on that, but I don't think this is the right time for that discussion. Would like more details, I agree. I agree. I think there was a question, and I think I may have missed it, I think, oh, let's Tyler Betts, you brought it up. You asked why I was for this and why the others were not. And I would like to stress that this document is, how many pages, Councilmember Wors? Several? The draft contract that we have that we've been discussing for a while?
Eight.
Eight pages. And of those eight pages, let's just be clear, the only two things that we differ on are why we're here tonight. Outside of that, the eight pages, we've had consensus among our group in a very, very good productive conversation. So I want the takeaway to be that a lot of work has gone into those eight pages, and we're here because there are two potential issues, they're not small issues, but that we want to get the insight of the entire council. But why I'm for it? I'm for it because not that I'm for this property, but because it has always been my goal to present something that is viable. I've heard a lot of you say, "It's been here since 2016, what are we going to do with it?" I hear that not just in this room, but when I'm out in the public, when I was campaigning, I heard that from all of you. What are we going to do with this? And the answer, I don't have the prescription as to what we're going to do with this, but what I have said from the very beginning is that we would put forward a viable solution, but the public should always have that right to be able to provide their opinion on which way this ultimately goes. But from the construction of the RFP down to every public meeting, which we've had many, we really have, and a lot of public input throughout this process, it's always been my goal to present something that you can fully analyze, and that you can pick apart and say, "I am for it because," or "I'm opposed to it because." So that's where I stand.
Just jump in. Thanks, everybody, for being here. I know it's getting late. You know, the last couple of days, I was, a couple of people saying, "Good luck, you know, good luck, Monday night." But I think it was a great thing. This was a great thing. This is what community is all about. You know, I think it's, to me, what a community is about is embracing the differences, the differences that make us who we are. Now, I guess I just want, maybe it's more essential media, it's not being portrayed tonight, but it's not us versus them, or us versus you. We are definitely a league, and I feel like we are a league. I mean that in my heart and soul. You know, when I grew up here, it's not the Berlin that it was. What we see today, I think, hopefully, we're all very proud of that. I'm very proud of it. You know, I know, to me, having a hard time finding a place to eat, it's so busy on the lunch day, is a great thing. I lived it when it wasn't that way in the late 80s, early 90s. We shall be very proud of what we have today. And all the comments, you guys, everybody is speaking with their heart and soul, and we have what everybody wants in this town. And I think preserving that is front of mind for all of us. So I want to, you know, approach this with respect and empathy. Don't miss Cook up before it leaves my head, and when you thought, your thought was ignored. I believe you saw something tonight, that was a seismic change, you mentioned it. You know, we do, as a council, we talked about this last week at the end of our meeting, have the right to make a motion and open it up in public discourse, you know. I keep using the skate park conversation from a month ago. If we see a group of people that are here clearly for that issue, let's not make them wait all night. I think there's consensus up here to make a motion and have everybody come up. So it's clearly, I mean, something rubs me in the wrong way, my background, for anybody to feel like we don't want to hear what you all have to say, and it's just not the case. It was just, I think it was an opportunity to formalize our meeting some, and allow the public comment at the time that it should be. So, you know, on this particular matter, I mean, I think it's great to hear, and I agree with all, so many points that were made. You know, I've always known the subcommittee, so, and I get the luxury, I think I have a year where I can just throw out the new guy, so I've only been here since October. So I'm more comfortable down there, to tell you the truth, and I don't know, hopefully that will never, never change, because I'm not a politician, so it doesn't always come out clearly what I'm trying to articulate.
The year that I said that, everybody thought that was funny.
Want to try it again?
It's all good.
It's 9:30 though.
So I know, I'm just going to wrap it up. But I'm actually disappointed that we're here today. I mean, I would, I am not in favor of throwing this whole thing a leg, starting over, I will say. I would like, I think there's some sort of middle ground that we can find here. I am definitely the middle ground guy. I don't like that Mr. Gillis found out from somebody else in the community what was happening tonight. I think there should have been a conversation had Mr. Gillis knowing, letting him know that the subcommittee was going to issue a recommendation to move forward without this project. I have a real problem with that, procedurally, I don't think that's fair. And the subcommittee's been working for a year on this, and we still don't have our contract. I'm not ready in two and a half hours to abandon the effort either.
Send us back to work.
Yeah, so that's kind of where I'm at. So I actually like Mr. Hammond's PDF that he sent, or like Jack's idea too. I'm at the point where I don't know, I'm wondering if the elected officials can get this done, or if it meets the needs of the community.
The nice part is, is that the EMP runs out in July. I say, "Send us back to work. Let's bring a contract forward, everybody in this room to pick apart, and a plan for everybody in this room to pick apart." And then, if you don't like it, then you find a different pathway.
That is what I'd like, I personally, that's what I thought the work of the subcommittee was, to bring a contract. And it didn't happen, although I think coming forward tonight was a great update. I think everybody needed it, everyone needed to hear it. There are details that haven't been shared, yeah, as far as what are the uses would be along Orson City Boulevard, you know, the actual plan of the demoing of cutting the building, not in half, but you know, saying, you know, parallel to Orson City Boulevard. I think you could see that in the schematic, but you know, Mr. Cassio and I go way back, and we tried to fight Glenn Riddle, the development of that, way back when, we didn't win that one. But I think that, but I think that, you know, we know where you are with your heart, and you bring forward great ideas, it's just, I don't, not on the same page, and I'm the one that want to start over at ground zero, I guess, is the point. I think that there is a planning commission, a parks commission, a hybrid group, subcommittee, maybe that's an idea too. I don't have it all formulated, I just am not in favor of throwing out the year's worth of work, over what really is $200,000, is the difference. I think we would have had a different concept tonight if the $200,000 was addressed, and the due restrictions.
And just to be clear, the $200,000 is, it's $1.5 million, I believe it's $100,000 for the rails and trailer, and $100,000 for the amphitheater. And that is to sunset in 24 months. If we, it's 1.7 to us with those two caveats. If we, it's 1.7 to us with those two caveats, and at the end of 24 months, if we have not made headway on those two items, that $200,000 is the town of Berlin's to do as we would like. But I've understood, and I've articulated this to the others as well, that the request for that by Coastal Ventures Properties is to stimulate the ability for us to get the rails and trails part done. It would factor in probably the amount we would need for the match. And then it would also stimulate what they believe could be a campaign effort to be able to raise money for whatever goes on in that area that shows an amphitheater, a rhapsody moment, or an entertainment venue. If it was, I think I hear skate park murmurs, but if it was that, I'm sure they would throw that same willingness beside it. I don't know, I can't speak for that. But that's what the $200,000 was earmarked for. It's not that I think they didn't want the town to have it. I think it's just that they wanted to try and stimulate those projects.
Yeah, I think my point to bring that up, because I believe it was a sticking point.
I know it was. I know it was. I've lived it.
Can, I mean, so what do we need to get back to work to try to get a contract before this group, before the whole community to see? Is there not willingness on the subcommittee's part to, is there a willingness from Mr. Gillis to get together with the subcommittee again?
I wouldn't say that. I think there is merit in, you know, still looking this over a little bit further, but I do think we need to pause on the whole situation. I think we need to hear from the planning commission. I think we need to hear from Parks, as Jack said. I also think we need to hear more from the citizens, so whether that's a series of meetings or what. Just to dial this down and make sure this is the right project for Berlin. But I do want to, you know, commend Palmer for bringing this before us. I mean, he basically is repurposing this whole plan. If you've ever been inside, and I don't think many of you have, it is deplorable inside. To rehab this building is nothing short of a miracle. Plus to add the garden center to it, I mean, it's overall a very nice project. Again, I want more input, and I don't think that would take long yet. But again, more public input, planning commission, and Parks.
But don't you think it would be better to share that, or to have that input with the public's ability to look at a contract, look at the plans?
I'd say fully disclose everything.
Yeah, but I mean, we should have items, the two outstanding items should be in a contract for folks to see. We should be able to present, hey, look, this is the request, is now $1.7 million with those two caveats, and whether it's 10 years, seven years, whatever we want. But that, we should have a contract that the public can pick apart and opine on, as well as anybody else that wants to be a part of that process.
The planning commission knows the general framework of the deal. I just want to hear from them.
Do they?
I think they do.
Well, you know, they do.
Having a contract, having a contract, having a contract is after the fact. And I'm sitting here, and I wonder, first of all, let me say, I think this has been a very good meeting. This has been a very good meeting with very good input from the public. And for Palmer, I wonder where we would be if we had had a meeting, and meetings of this nature, before we even put down our PEO. What if Palmer had this information from the public when he developed his plan? We would be, we would be in a wonderful place, because his plan would have been reflective of all the information provided in this room tonight. Palmer, I think you have did a splendid job with what you had to work with. We, as a council, failed. We failed to give you the direction of our community, and that is our own fault. We failed to bring folks in a room, we failed to solicit their input and ideas prior before engaging your expertise. And for that, I apologize. But where we are tonight, I'm going to have to say, I agree with Jeb. I think we need to step back. We need to step back and solicit vigorously the input of our community as to what we feel should be out at Heron Park. I was on council when Heron Park was purchased. The reason it was purchased was to give the town control of what went there. We live with a chicken blank for many a year, and we wanted to ensure what went out there had the support of the community. That's why the thing was purchased. But we had failed to solicit that input vigorously. And when we come to ask your input, community, I'm saying, please provide it. Don't wait until the 10th hour or the 12th hour, whatever that deadline is, to fill these rooms with your suggestions and ideas. It's really hard sitting up here, trying to figure out what you think, when you can just come and share what you think with us. But I can't very well vote for building a road at Heron Park with the condition of some of our streets. That just rubs me the wrong way. And something else, putting, 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 putting a cap on what can be done out there for 10 years, and that, I think, is not in the best interest of any deal. This is just my opinion. Just like you said, it really lessens the value, as Ron has said. But, but folks, this deal, the way it stands, and this time, this time in which we are in and which we're living in today, I just cannot go along with moving forward with the more constructive community input as to what the community wants to see up there. I just can't do it.
Vice President Burrell, I will say that the dates that I mentioned in the beginning, I have to disagree with the fact that we failed as far as.
See, 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 Zack thinks he has to answer what.
No, I don't.
Whatever someone says. And some things are just are because they are.
Okay, and I differ by the fact that, I say that the dates that I listed in the beginning, the very beginning, in March of 2021, October of 2021, November of 2021, January of 2022, February of 2022, May of 2022, and January of 2023, those were all public meetings. And on more than one of those dates, there were public input for the process, from the development of the RFP to what we would like to see there, all the way down, we've had, or to which proposal to go with, or to negotiate with. Those things have public.
Would you tell me why, if so many people.
I can't answer that.
Feeling, feeling that they have not had the opportunity to participate in this process?
I can't answer that. I can't tell you the public meetings that we have had.
Evidently, we have done a real poor job of getting the word out.
Now, what I will say is that, in addition, when we talk about time, it is important to be cognizant that we are a year away, but not time as in physical clock this evening. I'm saying calendar for the demo grant. We have until June of 2024 to expend those funds. With that, you have to understand the process. We have to have DBF develop the scope of work. We have to have an RFP for those services. We have to approve the RFP, and they have to demo it by June of 2024, by the scope of the grant. Am I correct in that summary? Now, the, the one thing is, and you, I hear that. Now, the one thing that I have said, and I know that we all talk about public comment, is that, and I've asked our staff to look into it as well, it would be a very rigorous process for us to meet it, but, and it would take about eight weeks for it to unfold, but we've also discussed the idea of potentially going to ballot with the path forwards with this. And it truly does get that, for whoever comes, their voice heard. It would take eight weeks to unfold that, it would take a lot of staff time, but that's truly, I think, maybe the way that we need to get.
So your suggestion, is the suggestion that a ballot measure of, what would that be?
The ballot question could be framed, I mean, we have to work together on the language, but it would be potentially two options. One, the town retains demos and gets that property ready and explores future uses. Two, we go with something like this. And it's very, very narrow, try to explain it the best we can, make sure that the documents are all there, but it's truly a way that folks, we would have to run it as an election. So it would have the same framework as an election.
You would be committed to the results.
Correct. So, I mean, it's truly a way to measure the public's, and this has been, and you talk about 2016, when it was purchased, I was sitting out there in 2016, probably in the back row somewhere, but I was here the night that it was required. I wasn't on the council, I wasn't the mayor, and I had my own opinion about the property. But I can say that it has been a contentious property since it was acquired, and that there have been differing paths forward for that property. I'm of the belief that there's only one way to find out how everybody feels, and that's through a ballot. I really feel that way, unless this group wants to take that on as our constituent base. But it does take a defined plan to present, and I think that's the work of the subcommittee.
I would caution you that the wording on such a ballot would have to be very, very careful before it. And remind you, then be committed within reason. I mean, we've seen this happen before, we had a ballot for the sale of the electric plant. At the end of the day, that was not able to move forward because we didn't find a viable purchaser. But for something like this, if, and this is an oversimplification, if you're asking for a referendum question, should we sell it or should we not? You're then going to be committed to moving forward with whatever. And so you have to be very, very careful in how that question is formed.
And that could backfire.
Yeah.
Financially, it could financially backfire. Because now the, the sale price we were talking about is now, everybody knows, you have a ballot question, should we sell it or not? Somebody's going to come in and say, I'll give you $1 million for it.
Or $1.
Right.
It has to be very, very carefully done. I honestly, in my perspective, is I would not recommend that course.
And I will say that Mary has not recommended that, but I, and I understand the reasons why. I don't differ on the downsides of that, but I do see that as like one of the, I know it's got its hurdles, as the one way that we can really figure out how all of you feel.
I think I'm going to just reiterate this. I think I would still like to have, with community input, and I'm pretty sure that if you say it's about Heron Park, people are going to pay attention a little bit, hopefully. I'd still like the Parks Commission's input with community, I'd still like the Planning Commission with community, because we also have the public listening session that had things like, well, I don't want to speak in front of the full Planning Commission, but that would involve the Planning Commission, something like chopping it up and upgrading the zoning and all that, the ramp zone. I'm not sure how that would look, or how that would work exactly, but the bottom line is I would like those bodies to go back into the file, the memory files of the advisory committee that we were on, and get some of those ideas. Look at the RFP that was issued, because in this RFP's preference, or whatever that is called, you know, at the time of the response, we foresee a desire for many, they had some knowledge of what we were looking for, and I suspect that they looked back at the meeting minutes, and they heard public comment and part of that listening session, that was in March of 21. I just think that we have, you know, some, I agree with a lot of what's been said, although I still stand by my recommendation. We need to kind of pause, get the groups, the vital people together, and get them to talk.
Could we table this for tonight? Should we, it's 10:00, 10:00, I don't know what you guys think, but we just.
Sure, but I would say that the EMP is running out.
Right.
And I would say that we are looking for guidance from the group, so that question is not going to change, and we probably will not probably meet without guidance from this group again with Coastal Ventures Properties. I think that would be really what we'd bring to the table if we don't have clear direction by this body. So I'm open to that motion, we'll take a second.
Well, I think a motion that would take the temporary pause till we hear from the Planning Commission, the Parks Commission, and have at least two or three public meetings to get input.
Are you putting a timeframe on that?
I think.
So the, the motion would be, the motion, please, one more time.
Would be to temporarily pause negotiations till we get full input on planning.
Well, can I ask what the full input of the Planning Commission might be?
I want to present the information we have to the Planning Commission and see if they.
Okay, we don't have any of that.
I understand, I'm saying, we'll present it to them and let them weigh in on whether they think this is a viable deal and we should move forward or not. I think we should do the same with Parks, as well as more public input.
Because we have, I'm speaking for the Planning Commission, because I am staffed to the Planning Commission.
I understand.
We have not seen a site plan, we have not seen a contract, so we're not privy to that information today.
And I think you should be, as well as everybody else. There should be full disclosure.
So does this include, hold on, before we second, does this, does this include a contract? Because Dave mentioned two-fold.
I would disclose the contract first. I don't think there's any market out at this point.
So we would, the town's side of the contract?
Yeah, that's the.
The town's contract, that's not agreed upon.
Correct. But it shows where we're at.
So we would send this, any other work.
Yes.
Including the proposed contract.
Right.
To each one of those respective programs for their review and input.
Right.
And we would want that input by the next meeting?
Not the next meeting, at least the one.
The 20th?
First meeting in August? Yeah.
And if they want to hear from us, we'll.
July 12th is our next Planning Commission meeting, and then it would be the second Wednesday in August after that.
So July 12th for planning, what for Parks? July 11th? Is it then a second meeting in July? We could have that information to review?
When is his timeframe?
Gets posted on the town.
No, it's on holiday.
Gets posted on the town.
Does anybody know when this, when this DNF?
Yeah, it expires in July.
I lock down every door in town.
I don't have a firm, but the EMP, and I'm not advocating this, I'm just pointing out to the council that it can be, you don't have to wait for it to expire, it has a termination clause, you can just be done with it.
If, if that's the route, and there's, so I have, yeah, pause the negotiations with input from the Planning Commission and the Parks Commission, and then there was a second part of that, you wanted a public with, three meetings with the public?
Two or three meetings with the public.
Like this next session?
The school is all the information.
So the, the public meetings would be, what, August? Both meetings in August?
Every week.
Okay.
I know it's a lot to schedule.
I mean, those meetings are already there, and our meetings are already there, adding an agenda item, so it's not the end of that. Now, you had a motion, do you still second that motion? So we have a motion by Councilmember Nurr, second by Vice President Burrell, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All opposed? Let the record reflect, Councilmember Nichols, obviously, vote.
Oh, I, I say aye.
Okay. Uh, so the vote was unanimous with all council members present. All right, and then I would like to ask for guidance on how the town would like to proceed with the EMP since it would expire during the July portion. Do you want to explore extending that, or do you want to let the EMP lapse?
Do we have to be in, I mean, is that?
If you're not in it, then you're not in the negotiation anymore, correct?
Well, that's an exclusive negotiation.
Okay.
Right, and so it's kind of.
So is the goal of this body to let it expire, that's what I'm asking?
To extend it.
That's what I'm asking?
How to extend it.
Well, then that takes a motion. And the duration of, for how long you would like us to propose extending it, and it does take the other party's reach, but.
It would be a reasonable amount of time.
Well, there was angst by you, there was angst by you to go longer than 90 days.
There was, I mean.
We're almost at 180.
So when are we, when are we having the information presented by the committee, by August 15th?
The vote was to have that.
On the 14th.
At their July meetings, I don't know how quickly it will summarize.
What you're looking to get back from them.
Right. And then both of the public listening, or all three of the public listening portions would be done in August. And then, so that's what, 60 days at least? So I would say if you want to extend it, extend it to the end of the year?
We'd want to save.
I'm in. So a motion by Councilmember Nera to request from Coastal Ventures to extend until the end of the year?
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Green, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
So let the record reflect, Councilmember Nichols, opposition.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's too long.
The vote was three to two with Councilmember Nichols and Oress opposed. All right, and that's through the EMP. David, can you take care of that for us, please? Yeah. Thank you. All right, thank you all for, for your input. If possible, is this related to Heron Park? Okay, and, well, I mean, and you had.
As a comment, I don't understand what you did just about, but I don't think that the public is looking for more listening sessions. I, I didn't hear as a proponent actually say that. We could sit here, the public is looking for engagement and development of ideas that have buy-in from a broad swath of the community. So this notion of just a listening thing where you guys sit up there and say nothing, and any member of the public comes up and says anything that they want, I don't think it's going to really get us anywhere. That's why I put a proposal on the table for a commission that would receive all of those ideas, sort through them, and provide a reasoned response as to whether, you know, if things were viable or not. So, I mean, it's up to you, it's not up to me, but you could say that we're just going to have listening sessions and haul that public input when there's no feedback, there's no traction to any process that comes out of that, and you just have, you know, more and more and more people just saying more and more ideas that might or might not be grounded in reality. I don't think that's going to get us somewhere. We need, we need a process here that sorts through those ideas, identifies the good ones, identifies the impractical ones, and provides a reasoned, decent, nice response to people who have an idea that will work.
And I think, as a council, we're trying to make a decision on whether we should move forward with Coastal Ventures or not. So from the public, I'd like to present what they've offered, or hand to the Planning Commission, full disclosure, and then hear back whether they think it's viable or not.
Okay, so this whole process is specifically focused only on?
That contract?
Only on this.
Not only, but it lets them know, here's what's on the table. And if they say, you know what, I like this part of it, but I don't like that, that's something worth noting.
But at the same time, it's giving you, Mr. Heenan, and that group that you and Mr. Cassio suggested, you guys can put yourselves together and have that discussion, because now this information is going to be available to you. Get yourselves together and discuss what you think should happen. That's the public part of it, bring that to the table and tell us what that is. You guys meet together with, you said that there, there are buy-ins from the people in this community who know this and who know that business. Get together between now and then, get those things together so that when it's time for this, time to talk or listen, we don't have to do the same things that we've done for the last three years, because we have listened for the last three years. We've done it in Zoom, we've done it in person several times. So formulate together, because I know that those ideas, this amphitheater isn't new. I was on that committee when we were, formulated that committee when we had a different mayor. I was on that committee along with this guy, that guy, and a couple others that aren't getting up here anymore. And we talked amphitheater way back in 2016, or 2017, when I was on the committee, not even sitting in this seat.
Also talked about repurposing the building.
We talked, all of the things have been discussed since 2017. And I'm not saying that I'm for the, the project that's being put on the table, but at the same time, what I am saying is, if we're going to listen again to the public, which I love listening to, put your group together. We don't have to name it, but put, you all sit together and bring that to us, because I'm ready to hear it. Really.
My proposal is that the town establish a committee that's time limited to go through this.
That there may be some council members on it.
The committee that existed before was primarily charged with like development as a park. And you look at the minutes, and they're talking about bird watching, they're talking about pollinators, and that's all great stuff. But that's not the sale and redevelopment of all of this land, they're very different things. But my proposal was that the town create a committee of people that are from the town that know about these processes and can sort out this. And I'm sorry I've taken up too much of your time, I won't say anymore.
No, don't apologize.
If, if we're extending the time, then I would like another 120 seconds, please.
How about?
So just following this process through the news, again, the whole goals were outlined in the RFP. This RFP was released a year ago, this was the framework from the town's input. I'm sorry that nobody read this or had access to this, I got it through the public website. I had asked this to be put out. So, I mean, regardless of the town and the community not knowing anything, I'm all over, just like Councilwoman Nichols. Councilwoman Nichols says she wants more input, I'm willing to have more input. This is a very jello plan, we want to do what the, what the community reflects. So that being the case, help me help you, I can implement it.
Well, I'm not saying I want to sell to you, Palmer, I'm not saying that.
And that's fine.
There's been absolutely none.
Ron, respectfully, I disagree.
There hasn't been.
What is this? We can disagree, he does not properly articulate.
The planning division, the parks division.
This was a public process, Ron, I'm sorry you didn't see it, being a member of the Planning Commission.
We were not, we were not in the event.
Mayor, I will say that there is not enough information in this motion for staff to take.
It's very vague, I agree with you. It's very difficult to implement, and I agree. I think that to do our best, the way that I understand this, is that we will compile some sense of the documents, send them to those respective committees that the council has asked, ask for their input, and ask that they seek public comment during that time, but I think that's all we can do, that's my understanding of it.
I don't think you're going to get anything.
I don't, I don't know either, I don't think so, but, but I think that's how, at least that's the way that we are going to move forward unless I get other directions. We will send those documents, it will be a request, we can't demand that they have public comment, do set their own agendas, but we will ask that each one of those committees have a point of public comments to, and gather that to send it to us. I think that's all we can do. Let's, we, we do have some, I, I want to be cognizant of the fact that we are still early in our agenda. We do have work that needs to be done this evening that is up against a deadline, so I would like to continue to move on. The agenda item four is the first reading of ordinance 2023 dash zero five. Speed cameras, our police chief Arnold Downing and town attorney David Gaskell are going to run the point. I do want to note while we have folks here this evening that a public hearing will be held on Monday, July 10th, 2023, at 7:00 PM. Thank you both, carry your weight.
Good evening, everyone. This ordinance is just one piece of the puzzle, in actuality, it's the first piece of the puzzle, allowing the town, or the town itself establishing the right to go ahead and establish speed cameras and speed enforcement.
My question is, is, is what constitutes a school zone would, would, would Head Start be considered a school zone thus?
It will not, it has to be a public school or private school, local school or private school.
So does.
And it has to go ahead and be K through 12.
And that's a state law.
That's how it's set, correct.
Thanks, Mark. So this, this is a first reading, so I think that's all we're looking, is there anything else you want to add?
Well, the, the, the school, the school zones, obviously, are Buckingham Elementary, and it's all, all town roads within a half mile radius of Buckingham, within a half mile radius of Berlin Intermediate, half mile radius of Stephenicater Middle School, Stephenicater High School, and Worcester Preparatory School.
So Flower Street would, would, would qualify as being in that radius?
Possibly could, you have to have a nexus to it, so it might have to, you know, have some oversight, and we say yes or no. I believe that's a yes, because of school traffic, the buses and those things. But again, it's something that actually has to be reviewed a little bit more.
As the consultant.
So when, when could we get a determination as to Flower Street and possibly Branch Street?
There's a couple of things. Well, once the contract's done, the vendor, whoever we select, would have to go ahead and monitor and look at those sites. And they won't choose sites that are not approved, that don't feel to be successful. So they will definitely take great input from the council in regards to those, saying that we'd like to have them in these areas.
Is William Street being considered?
William Street would be, but also it's on a state highway, so we might have to have a little bit more of a dialogue with state highway to have those approvals, because that is a state road.
Well, I really would like to have Branch and Flower considered in this campaign.
Aye.
Well, again, that's not the discussion, but we're definitely going to have all those streets or that discussion, and ask everyone for the streets so we can go ahead. Once we go to the next part, which is actually sign a contract with the vendor, and we'll tell the vendor all the streets that we feel. And that means your discussion and staff discussion.
Any other questions, is this first reading?
Well, wait a minute, my discussion is staff discussion. Or, or what does that mean?
No, everything that the council wants, plus what the staff of their field, and we'll list them off. Plus, you know, again, citizens already spoke on what streets they want them on, so that part comes from staff.
Just want to make sure Flower and Branch is in that group.
Anything else we need for the first reading?
No.
Thank you, reminder, the public hearing will be held on Monday, July 10th, 2023. All right, up next is agenda item 5A, motion 2023 dash 21, out by 24, and with contract renewals, and our town administrator, Mary Bolm, to her own point.
This motion is typically presented to you the second meeting in June after the passage of the budget before we get into the starting fiscal year, because most of these contracts start July 1. They are, with, with the exception of dollar amounts in some cases, which are a fairly minor, the same that we have presented previous. Ivy did want to note that while the fireworks contract is listed in here as over $10,000, she typically does receive enough sponsorship that the ultimate payment of town dollars is not $10,000 per second.
Thank you.
We are looking for a motion to approve.
Actually, I have just a question or two. For EA Engineering, for EA Engineering, Stormwater Consulting not to exceed $100,000, is that for West Street Design?
No, that is for on-call engineering services.
That's consistent with your agreement.
And I'm just curious, I know this is annual, but now that it's been established that the D E F C and the D E F C EMS or vendors, why they're not on this list?
Because they have a separate agreement, so they have an individual lease agreement.
I would like to see us pull cards technology from this list. I've been asking for a couple of years to RFP this, this would just delay it for another year.
Is that a motion?
I think there's better options out there.
While I make a motion to approve, will we have to find this card?
A motion to approve motion 2023 dash 21 without cards technology.
Now, is that, just for clarification, what does that mean, do we lose everything?
Yes, it means we will not have a contract as of July 1.
What, what's that?
The service on the budget is after we improve, exclusively.
Well, how do we get to the point where we RFP it?
It's been the, it's been the goal of ours to RFP that I think that the constraint is the available staff time to be able to move forward with that. Now we have that position slated, one of those special projects can be working toward that RFP. But I think pulling this with a couple of weeks to, to go.
Well, this is one more thing.
I mean, no, you've had it, you've had it in the budget, so I, I see what you're saying. But, and we haven't said no, we've just said we don't have the expertise to develop that in-house, and that we need to, to structure that RFP. We have two folks really that work in administration full-time, like, that's, that's hard for them to construct, and we don't have the expertise on staff to be able to do that. So we hear you, we want the same thing, all of us, even at the staff level, want the same thing. We just don't have the tools to do that right now.
Well, yeah, I'm going to, right, I'll figure, I can, Jay, the marketplace savings are there, because that's potential, I know other organizations have lost with different, really different vendors. So, but time sensitive, obviously. I would hope that our new special projects person can tackle this immediately. Because, plus, I think we should look into locals for the, for the vending contracts.
So, 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 good time may not be, be appropriate now to, to consider Jay's concern. But, but I do believe on the next budget year, this should be an RFP developed and these services put in for good, because cards have, has been around quite a few years now, haven't it? So it may be time to, to just get some new eyes.
So can't we, can't we approve as it is and start the, and start looking, just sticking our feet in the water now? So that when the season comes, we have the information in front of us, correct?
I'm, I'm sorry, what do you need, this, what do you need to do to the RFP? This is the, what we talked about.
Do you need to be able to create an RFP?
We need to be able to create an RFP that every potential vendor is going to be looking at apples to apples.
Right, okay, I remember talking about that.
And are we committed in the current contract for a one-year term, or is there a possibility to cancel?
I would have to review the exact terms of the contract, but typically there's one.
I'll withdraw my motion, but I'd like the motion, whoever makes the motion, to just state that an RFP develops.
I would make the motion to approve this 2023-21 with the inclusion of creation of an RFP for IT services for the next coming year.
I wouldn't even say coming year.
For the next, as soon as possible. But.
Does it take a while?
Yeah.
It will take a while.
It will take a while.
It will take a while.
So can we do bite the second thirty first?
And we've explored Councilmember Oress's suggestion as well, we've tried to get that vendor platform that you, yeah, it's, it's a little more to it than.
Okay, so my motion officially is going to be to go ahead and approve motion 2023 dash 21 with the intent of developing a RFP for internet services for, as applicable as soon as possible.
Second.
All in favor, well, I have the motion by Councilmember Oress, second by. All in favor, well, I have the motion by council member Oris, a second by council member Nichols, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Let the record reflect the motion 2023 dash 21 with the caveat of creating an RFP for information technology services as soon as possible, passing it in. All right, up next is agenda item 5B, motion 2023 dash 22, approval of RFP 2023 dash zero nine, and letter of intent to allow production to begin on the Broad Street list station equipment and our water resource director, Jamie Lastum, and E B F. Gosh, thank God he's not here. Yeah, that's it, that would have been half of your annual budget. Go ahead.
You all read my staff report, I'm gonna keep it short. I just need a letter of intent. It locks us in at our price now, and that'll start the production, and it should save us, it could save us even longer of the 10 weeks, but we're looking, give or take six, eight weeks to start production, you know.
Motion to approve.
Second.
So I have the motion by council member Oris, a second by council member Nichols, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Let the record reflect the motion 2023 dash 22, approval of RFP and the letter of intent passing it in.
We don't want that fact.
And when we we will have, when we get to the point of going out to bid for it, we will get you the dates and everything for the for the RFP. So that way you're not, somebody doesn't come up to you and ask you if we start yet.
And thank you, Jamie, for having me on this project.
It's going to be very complex, but, you know, there, I was just talking with Josh there, I want to change the date just because a little bit longer, due to the limited availability of space. That's going to be a big driving factor, so.
Thank you. Up next is agenda item 5C, the approval of motion 2023 dash, and remember, we're not giving them numbers yet, Ray Kelsey, and their amendments to the employee handbook sections four, five, and eight, review and approval. The human resources director, Kelsey Dunson, and our town administrator, Mary Boland, are going to run point.
The sections that we brought to you tonight are compensation and pay practices, hours and attendance, and grievance procedures. You have the changes in a marked-up version. We also just accepted all changes for the purposes of printing. So as I've mentioned in the past, disregard formatting, because that will be corrected once we actually move forward with an accepted, you know, section, as well as references to other sections, because as we're updating this, the section numbers are changing. And then as far as any errors from accepting, you know, those punctuation type of things, those will be corrected as we go. But what you have here, I mean, it's been a long night, so I don't want to go through each thing, but if there's anything you have questions on, we are still working through sections three and six and seven. It's kind of a joint effort. Mary and I have been working on them separately and then kind of getting together once a week to just kind of discuss what changes we've made in there. So section three and six are pretty hefty in the sense of they have a lot of employment law and practices incorporated in them, so we just need to make sure we're not changing something that is legally there for a reason, so we just need to be a little more careful in those sections, which is why they've taken a little longer, so we've kind of put them on the back burner, but they are something we've been amending over the last couple of months, so it's not far behind this, but.
So, Kelsey, I just have a real quick question. On page packet page 57, which is for point 11, town issues, correct?
Yes.
I know we, I know that they're in the packet, but it's it's a long thing. Do are we finding that these limits are suitable? Maybe this might be a better question for Mary, like, are these too much, too high?
These limits are set according to the purchasing policy. These are the the purchasing limits as established in that document, how the credit card amounts match that.
So then will we have to reapprove the purchasing policy with the additional super tenets and mitigative systems?
No, that is actually already.
It's a next question.
This this language is actually making the two documents match.
Thank you.
And we're not looking for approval tonight. It was just kind of a, hey, look this over, you have it in front of you with the changes. Next meeting, if there aren't any adjustments that you guys want to see, we'll bring it forward for a motion. Like I said, three and six are hefty, they're not far behind us, though, and eight is actually, or seven's actually a very small section, and just, we just didn't have time to get it in here, so that one's going to be close behind us as well.
This this actually was on the agenda as an approval, I own it.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's a good last time.
If you did not wish to approve it tonight, you wish to look at it during certain approvals.
Can we just agree?
Yeah.
The one thing.
I've got my vacation, so.
Just catching up.
The one thing before we do a motion to approve or anything of that nature, page 60 does address cell phone telephone reimbursements. I want to bring everybody up to speed. We are going to operate within the budget for cell phones, but we are exploring town-owned devices. That is something that we wish to have for the privacy of our staff, as well as the transparency for the public. It's been discussed at staff level, and it's more than likely something that you will see moving forward as a contract for approval to move forward with town issued devices. So I just want, that's a note on here, it's in page 60, it's in the margin, just be aware of that.
How many are we talking about when we say roughly?
Sixty-seven, sixty-five, something like that. It would be some configuration. I'm not prepared to say it's going to be that many devices, but probably close to.
I want one.
Well, you're probably going to get one.
I want another one.
You're probably going to get one. If you choose to use it or not, that would be up to you, but you would you would have one. There is, there is a different level of requests that we're seeing from the public, and we want to be able to comply with those, and in the best nature to do that, this is then a recommendation even by the attorney general's office, so.
I was just in a class about that, where they were discussing.
Kelsey, tell me about.
What's the why?
Tell me about payroll records. This this is section four dash four point oh four talks about maintaining the records with 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 finance.
Page fifty-three.
Where where would I find, where would I find oversight of those records?
It's fifty-three of the packet, but currently, what happens is when I process payroll, certain documents of payroll go to the finance department. Actually, our accounts payable, they, I'm sorry, yeah, payable, they, she reviews my payroll, and I give her documents to review to make sure that, you know, she doesn't see anything out of the ordinary, she does a comparison of the last payroll, make sure no numbers are jumping out as like, you know, odd, and then she keeps some and I have some. So really, it's kind of both, and I think this is one thing we were kind of like, should we change it to say human resources and finance, but we just left it as it was in finance, because it's kind of a little bit of both.
It's it's kind of the difference between the time record and the actual pay records.
She has more pay, but I process it, she reviews it, and then she keeps it.
So in simple language, Kelsey gives all the personnel files. A P department creates the pay registers, it's concerned about actual pay and what can be processed as a pay.
Where would I find the process for for just validating, validating best with finance?
We have an internal control established. Yes. As as a process that orders review, and we update it every year if there is a change in personnel name or, so the process itself from initiating, entering the time, initiating the time, approving the time by department head is spelled out in internal decision.
Okay. So that's where I would find.
It's a written document that you sign off what orders are reading.
Right. So I'll make a motion to approve if there's no further questions.
It's just going to be added to that running list that you see here. Yeah, and it'll be a total motion for approval once we get through all the sections.
Correct.
So if there's consensus is what we're looking for, right, or a motion?
What do you want?
I'm okay with consensus, and our town attorney's gone, so we can do what we want.
Well, I think the motion is best, because it does have order again.
I'll make that motion. Motion to 2020, motion this year dash 23. Amendments to employee handbook sections, sections four or five.
Okay, I have a motion to approve by council member Oris, a second by council member, all in favor, say aye. All opposed. It is, I mean, coffee manager. I had a half, a one-third cap before, I think, I think burnt that a long time ago. One thing we got consensus on this evening. All right, we are on to agenda item number six, but I do want to ask the group that we add one more agenda item and ask the the fire companies group to come forward. We have the outstanding item, which is contracts, and I'd like to have that group come forward if the council's open to that. Yes, great, thank you. Just name and for the record.
Dean Fitzgerald, president, Brooklyn Fire Company, president of Brooklyn Fire Company Emergency Services Incorporated. Thank you for working with us this evening.
And I'm Joe Moore.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Dave, does the fire company want to burn down the chicken plant? Want to burn down the chicken plant as a training?
All right, so so the reason, I think, just to get us up to speed, and correct me if I'm wrong, it is late, the reason that we're here is the council has approved a set of contracts that differ from what the fire company has presented, so if we can just fill in the gaps, greatly appreciated.
We'll try, we'll do the easy one first. So the emergency medical services contract and the correspondence, the only difference is the adding of the quarterly report for Atlantic General Hospital that the town, somebody decided put that in.
I asked for that.
That was not in our contract, so we we will concede that. I had to sign documents here tonight, adding, and the date is revised down the bottom, so now we always know what the dates are. Have both signed copies, so we, our corporation had a special meeting last Thursday night, and we were given direction that we we put that in, and.
So you're agreeing to the town's terms on the EMS.
So we ended the A H, that was the only difference we had between the documents that we signed and turned in last Friday morning, so we ended that, and we have these here to be for whatever private party it is, but.
Gaskell can.
So I'll see you. Mayor, what's, what are you getting at there?
What do you mean?
What are you looking to find out there?
I've asked for the pullout to be for the nursing home facilities and the hospital, just as a sense of trying to understand, I think, if the goal of this body, and I think the goal of the EMS organization is for us to develop a formula. I think the way that we can do that, we need some information, and I believe the calls going from Atlantic General to another facility, an interfacility transport, are calls that I would like to know the answer to. So that's the reason I asked for.
Hey, that gets us to a formula?
I mean, that's the reason I asked for, and it's not, it's not hard to get. I mean, I've asked the 911 system for it, it's been shared, it's not really difficult to get, and but it's easier for you all to compile that information than us to have to go through the requests.
Can we get it correct from A G?
We can get it direct from the 911 center, so can they? That's why, it's just easier for them, they know the calls that they're running. That's the reason we put it in there and the reason I've asked for.
So if we can get it, why are we asking them to get it?
Because they do it.
So so. They don't want to correct what's saying that the mayor disdated, so so it is also Gold Creek Retirement Center.
But that's been in there.
Those two, those two were always in there, Brooklyn Nursing Home and Gold Creek. The addition, just so we're all clear, the addition in Atlantic General Hospital, and I wanted to clarify one thing. We go because they dial 911. We cannot, so this is the first I've heard about a formula.
But that's your request. Your request is a formula to be developed, and I think.
You can't exclude those calls. That hospital is called in 911, we have to go, so I don't want to debate that here tonight, because we're here to get these going, we got to pull these.
And nobody's requested to exclude that from the response, but.
And we're going, so the public understands we're going because.
Put them here.
So so they're both here. So the five employees that.
What is it?
I'll tell you, it's like all my. So 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 that's a good point why that's ringing, just fill time here, is that that's the new.
What you.
So.
What you.
When we talk about development, and you saw the first reports that we sent you, how it could include you when they went to planning, you see that in there. So just because something is new construction does not mean fire company not going to respond. So 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 the fire company, the the only difference there, everything we've, we all work together, it is the money and the term of the contract. You know, we we, as your vendor, there's that RFP bid out, but you asked us for a budget and a proposal, and we did that in April at $200,000. The study backs up that number, that's a, you know, 2016 study, we've not really increased it. Last year, we were funded at 116 and some change, this year 116. Like during our special meeting, we we just can't do that again. The last year's budget, and we gave you memorandums of last year's budget, that has no funds for fire operations, meaning we are buying no fire equipment that should be being replaced every year, and the only place we have is the building maintenance repair. So we have that cutback of the contracts for maintenance, we have that cutback very severely, and as Mr. Vice President Burrell asked, and we do it during our quarterly budget reports, like last year, I think the very first quarter, I went and looked at it, we told you, we're already over budget because the dryer blew up. So we're just telling you and asking you to give the parties time, amend the contract to January 31st. We showed you the math, $200,000 divided by 12, the number provided, divided by that number, so seven months. It allows us to be able to continue to respond after June 30th, because the current contract expires June 30th, and it allows time for us to have these quarterly work session meetings that we're supposed to, that we're not supposed to, we're going to have if we sign the contract, and talk through things, give the mayor and council time to get back your your own budget and see where they are from last year and try to get us from February to June. And that that keeps things moving forward. We think it's a fair thing to keep things moving forward. It's not that we surprised anybody with, I went back to work sessions, we said it, we put it in numerous documents, so we just want to keep moving forward.
What happens when we hit January 1st, or whatever that date is, and we have no money to provide?
Well, I, let me, let me weigh in for a moment and say, I cannot allow, in my best judgment, to advise my contract, my clients to sign a contract that they cannot comply with. If we sign the contract committing them getting the fire and rescue service to June 30th, we can't comply with it. If January 31 comes and you all say you do not have the money, and that's fine, then we will be billing you on a per diem basis for based on the value of services rendered if we render those services. And as you all know, our mission is to preserve and protect. There's a legal term called quantum marrow. We're entitled to reasonable payment for services that we are obligated to provide. And councilman Mayor, we don't intend to say forget it, but we do intend to get just compensation for the services that we provide. I will tell you that my advice to my client has been, you can't sign a contract that obligates you to provide services for months that you cannot afford to do. So respectfully, we hope you'll find $85,000, but if you don't, we'll bill you on a per diem basis for every service that we provide, beginning January 31st. But the important thing, as Dave said, it gives us all time to see whether you can work through and find the funds to provide fair compensation to the fire company.
And if there's time that we do, then the, then it could be signed to extend.
And, and also, if I may point out a couple other things, not only does it, uh, that you all see where your budget ended at the end of the year, we turn in those financials on September 30th. We volunteered last year's contract to move those up from December to September, so you all would get those earlier. So it's a, we're trying to work together, I want everybody to clearly understand, it's not only for you all to see how your budget ended, you can see how our budget ended, and if we have a surplus, we may adjust that number, uh, or we have money in the bank, or, or whatever, we could, that's why we need to have these work session meetings. I would tell you, we are enthusiastic about these work session meetings. We should have been having them all last year. I look, we started corresponding with the town on July 14th of 2022, and 17 different requests were made for our meeting when we had to. So now the contract clearly says quarterly, and I already have a draft, as soon as the contracts are signed, a draft schedule will come up here, so we can get started. So let's get started. And again, that's, we want to show that we are working together, that's what our corporation, we met Thursday night, let's do a fair contract, seven months. Not only do you see where your budget ended, contract clearly says our financials have to be up here by September 30th. My goal is to have them centered, as soon as we can get our fiscal year closed out, and Mr. Bergy get his work done, you'll have it. I'd love to have him up here on the first of September if we get, that's going to be hard to get our books closed out, because people say, this is a late date, you gotta let everything clear through, uh, purchase orders, all that clear through from this fiscal year. So it is working together, and it's what we feel is working together. And like you said, Mr. Gerson, it gives us time to work through it. Who's got what, who can do what, who can't do what. Because we're here to serve the public, we're all volunteers, fire, rescue, yes, our career staff does support us, but you're talking 55 volunteers. Do you think you're here late at 10:30 at night, what happens when we get up at 3:00 in the morning? Not being paid.
And this is separate from an additional funding question you had for capital?
Yes, yes, because there's no capital, there's, there's not been any capital in these contracts, and that's something we'll talk about at the work sessions. Yes, sir?
I hope I say this right. I really do hope I say this right. Do you know, uh, I had a teacher that used to say, nothing is needed but a bad thing in excess. She also, she also told me, the truth is one thing, and perception is another. The, the fire department, being in the community that I serve, is being perceived as having money. The fire department has money. How in the world can they not have money when they got two stellar fire departments? No, I'm talking for the, the stellar ones. I'm talking, I'm talking for down here on Main Street, and out there on 50. How can a fire department have two stellar departments and still be crying roar? I don't understand it. And you talk about work sessions and meetings. If we could have candid, money discussions about what actually is, and have that documented by the way that, that we requested it to be document, documented, when Troy Burnout was there, Troy just said, run the, uh, the quicken report, or whatever you.
Yes.
You, uh, 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 we could get to these places. But, but the perception is, you come over here and blow us a lot of smoke, and expect us to deal with it, Dave. One of the, I, I, I think it was number two, on my list of priorities, was equitable funding for the fire departments. But, but we both need to be able to set a path on how we get there. And if we're going to have these meetings, they need to be worthwhile. And yeah, you come up here and you provide numbers of runs and that kind of stuff, but I don't get a good feeling of where your spending is, and what you need. And now you are saying your attorney cannot advise you to, to sign a contract that you're not going to be able to fulfill, and you're going to invoice the town for service. But how did we get here? Well, let me. How did we get here, Joe? Yeah, let, I'll let Dave answer, but, Mr. Burrell, let, let me steam, if, if you all believe that the fire company is doing something improper or, or whatever, then have an audit. If you want to audit the fire company, we can't afford it because Jay Bergy doesn't do things for free, but if you want to pay for an audit, you can go to Mr. Bergy, and you can audit it. The, the, all I said was that rather than us saying, you find your own way to respond after January 31st, the only way we can continue to do it without saying, we're not going to do it because our money has run out, is to bill you on a fair and equitable basis. But the point that, that we're trying to make is, that, and, and Dave and I discuss things frequently with respect to him representing you, me representing the fire company, but I really can't tell them that you've got to sign a contract that I know they cannot perform on. But this gives you an opportunity, and us an opportunity, to work together to find out whether you can find the money that we say we need, or that we can adjust what we believe we have budgeted fairly for expenses. So I, I, respectfully, I didn't want to come up here and say, January 31, we're done, and we're going to respond to the county but not respond to the town, because that violates our mission. What I'm trying to do is say, as Dave said very good, it gives us an opportunity for you all to try and find the money, and for us to, if, if we are able to, is to adjust our budget. Now, I'll be quiet, and Dave can answer the issue of, uh, you know, what we provide in the way of information financially, and how that could be adjusted. That's, that's not in my service.
Can you explain to me what the change of service would look like for your organization if you did what Mr. Gerson responded to fire calls in the county but not in the town of Berlin?
The town of Berlin is in the county.
No, 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 I want to know outside of municipal limits, how that would look different? Because the fire engines are still the same, the personnel that staff them are still funded, and, and I know this, and you know this, David, uh, that the career crew is covering fire calls in and out of town, we know that. Uh, when the volunteers don't get up and respond, which is okay, we're not opposed to that, but we know that they're responding to fire calls. So my question is, with your message, Mr. Moore, that if that went a direction where not anything we want, any of us, but where you just responded to fire calls in the county and not in the municipal limits, how would that change the structure of your organization?
What I was saying was that we would respond to the fire calls in Berlin on a per diem basis.
I understand, but you said that you would bill, and Councilmember Nurse said, if we didn't have money, and you would still respond to those calls, but I want to understand, because I did this for a number of years, I want to know how that changes the level of service that you would provide in the county versus the municipal limits of Berlin.
I don't see that would.
It would not, trust me, it would not.
Right, because we would still provide in the county because they fund us.
And the level of service, and apparatus that you need is not strictly for the town of Berlin.
No, I understand that.
I, I know that, you know that, but I just want to say that to the public, that is not all because of the town of Berlin.
Mayor, respectfully, that's not what we're saying. What we're saying is that you got the services of 55 volunteers. He doesn't get paid, you know this.
And we appreciate that, we really appreciate that service.
And they don't get paid. What we have done is, we have struck a budget, which is, to our best judgment, a reasonable cost of providing services in town to the town. The county is a different situation, as you know, we get funded by the county. All we have said is, we are simply asking you to reimburse us for the fair cost of providing those services.
And none of us are disputing that. We, I think we all want equitable funding for the services you provide, we all want that. I think that, I was just trying to unpack the, the statement of how the change in service to the county would change the structure to your organization if you were not responding to calls in the town of Berlin. And the answer is, it wouldn't.
Well, it wouldn't in the county, that's correct.
It wouldn't change the way that your three stations are structured, the apparatus placement of those three stations, it would not change.
It would, I don't, it would not adequately.
I'm not disputing that. I'm saying that it would not change the way that you structure your organization at all.
I don't know that that's where I was coming from, Mayor.
That was the way I understood it, so that's why I was just trying to unpack.
No, I simply said that for the services that we're providing in the town, we have budgeted for what we have requested the town to give us. And that funding, based on what you gave us, as opposed to what we had budgeted and requested, terminates those expense funding January 31st.
So how does this group feel, we have the $220,000 in ARPA, how does the group feel about extending the contract for the calculation that they've done using the ARPA funds, and if, as President Fitzgerald said, there is a surplus at the end of the year, we just go back into those ARPA funds that they can use for capital? But it gives us 12 months of service cover.
The two, the money you're talking about, the earmarked for, for them already.
Correct. And if there was a surplus, like President Fitzgerald stated, that would be returned back to that allowable capital, and would give us time to be able to work through the items you've identified, and it would provide 12 months of coverage consistent with our other contracts that we approved.
Well, so, jumped around a couple of subjects, so, trying to go in order. So, so Vice President Burrell asked a question, so, and I think that's one of the work session topics that I had proposed, uh, last year, like Vice President said, we don't want to meet just to meet. Uh, we turn in those financials right out of the, uh, every month, the quarterly report that, uh, Councilmember Nurse is right out of the financial software. But one of the quarterly meetings is, instead of just giving you that report from Mr. Bergy, we need to explain what those numbers are. Giving you a report is just like me or anybody looking at the town books. We have to ask you, or Ms. Burrell, or Ms. Slade, what some of those numbers mean, so instead of just giving you a talk on record, we can answer your questions, so it eliminates that public perception when they see an account, and this is going to lead me to your ARPA, because you're going to see an account this year with 218,000 or 220,000 dollars in it, you're going to see it. We don't hide anything from anybody. And you're going to say, oh, they're flushing money, why are they up here strapping, or why are they saying anything? Well, that is the other half of the 220,000 of ARPA funds, because we have to buy those air packs this year. Now, that, so, so that's why we are adamantly opposed to.
But these are the same air packs, sometimes I can cut you off.
Yep.
But, and it, forgive me if it comes off harsh, but it's almost 11 o'clock.
It is.
Is it? But I'm trying to be compassionate, everybody's time, I'm trying to be respectful here, so let me get to this part. So this is the same set of apparatus that we're also still waiting to see if we can get grant funded for, right? So what the mayor is suggesting, if I'm understanding you correctly, let's cut right to the meeting dates of this, because possibly come January, we may be billed per diem, right? And we don't even know what that looks like right now, we might not even have the money come January. But right now, we have $220,000 earmarked Berlin Fire Company or Berlin EMS, and sorry if I got it mixed up or wrong. So whichever it is, if we could use that money to cover what you need for now, and then, at the end of the year, if it all comes that we have extra, I mean, if we have extra and we could put it back to where that came from, you guys still get what you're asking for, correct? Right?
Or if they have a surplus, as President Fitzgerald suggested.
Or if those grants come through, which is also why this money is sitting right here, because the possibility of the grants is right here, we don't know if that's actually going to happen or not. So this is right here to possibly cover this, but in the meantime, it can cover you guys for us as far as the town of Berlin is going to, we're not hit with a per diem, right?
So, so that, that, what you proposed, that, that would, would work.
Well, that's what he just said, I thought.
I, I did not say that we were going to replenish it.
Oh, what did you say?
I said, I said that you would use the 220 to cover, it's not a joke.
It's not a joke.
Uh, I said that we would use the 220 to cover the gap, and explore a funding solution that leads to us understanding their costs, but if there was extra, it would go back into their ARPA funds, as you suggested if there was a surplus.
If they failed to get the grant, then they wouldn't have the money for.
Today's issue is fire coverage for next week.
Exactly.
So that's the way I.
So that takes precedence in.
Well, that's a good way to see it, but, but, but we won't, they don't have oxygen to fight fires. We won't be doing anything, we won't be, so the 200,000 into 116 will be at a dog point, because we'll be out of surplus. Right. Uh, because if they come in September, and.
But if we don't have $80,000 or $85,000, then we're still sitting here looking like, what are we going to do?
So, so, Councilmember Nichols has, has a good, uh, suggestion, thought on the table.
Well, what I have is 11 o'clock, and I'm not being rude with dudes, for real. This is crazy, 11 o'clock.
So, so, that would work, the only question that I can answer, and your staff, and you have experts in the room, is the ARPA funds, that can do it, that's allowable uses to go into our operating budget. Yes. It is, okay, I, I can't answer that, because that's your all-day expertise. So, so if that's allowable, that, again, by, it's just a different way you say.
They would be one time. That's, and our goal for 12 months would be to work toward.
Right.
Something that we don't do this again. And so we have contracts, once again, we started this in February, and we should not be at the end of our own.
So, so, if I understand correctly, then we come back in September, and for whatever reason, the end of the federal fiscal year comes, we do not get the grant, we know we have.
Well, that's speaking into it, we're hoping to get some.
Yes, I want to be positive, but we need to have this discussion now, so we all are on the same page. We do not get the grant, we would have the 218, 220, you would be reducing, if you ever had that, what we're talking about, 220 minus 81, we come back, then you would then go to your potential surplus of some sort.
No, we're not saying.
81.
We're not saying, that's not what I'm saying.
So how would we buy the air packs?
That's a challenge we would have to address at that time. If the challenge today.
As long as we're upfront.
I mean, the challenge today is how are you going to provide fire coverage for the town of Berlin municipal limits for 12 months?
That's where we are today.
And that is the challenge, it's on our desk right this moment. We want you to have air packs, which is why we were the first to commit the 220.
And we appreciate it, that's why we.
And we were the first at the time. Now, the, the challenge is, is that we are now faced with a different issue, and the only available cash that we have to get to 12 months is funds that we would like to buy air packs with, but you're saying that your operations are more important right this moment, and we're hearing that.
But it's only taking the 85,000, so you still have 135,000 to get some air packs, possibly, possibly? If it came to that.
It's not my choice, because the fire chief's off vacation, he's driving back from where he is, he may be up at 11 o'clock tonight, but, but, and that would be, you know, what, what trucks may be out of. o'clock tonight, but, but that would be, you know, what, what trucks may be out of service? Like the mayor was just saying, you know, if there's a whole truck with no air packs, then you have a 300,000, 500,000, 800,000 fire truck sitting there. He can certainly go on calls and have water and those, he doesn't want to have any breathing apparatus on him.
But we can fully fund your request if you accept that, do you agree?
So I don't have, I don't have the authority to do that, because that 220 is in the contract. So, we don't meet again until, until July, the, what is it, second Monday, you know, I mean, same night, five, 12, 10.
10.
That, that 220 in the contract will be reduced to the amount. So that's what I said, so, so we're in a dilemma here. Our contract's going to expire on June 30th. I can't do anything, I don't have the authority. You are here tonight, but.
So Dave, I'm sorry, I'm, okay. Can we do this? Can you, can you agree to the contract that you have in front of you? And we amend it to indicate what we've talked about here tonight, with the changes that you're requesting, using the 80, the remainder, the balance of whatever, the 85 from ARPA, and we make those changes as an amendment?
Well, we have to agree on it, Dave.
Well, it's.
I can, no, our corporate membership has to do that. We don't meet again until.
But what I mean, what I'm saying is, can you sign the contract that you have now, and we can amend this?
Oh, yes, yes. If you vote to sign the contract for the January 3rd and 1st, tonight, and I take that back, and then we renew the contract, oh, yes, I want to do that. But I can't change the contract overnight. I don't have that authority.
I don't like that scenario.
That's not what I thought.
Yeah, I don't like that scenario at all.
I mean, we can get a rewritten contract.
Sure. We can approve a contract like we did the other night. Our, our contracts at the rate that they would like for, you did the math for us, whatever that monthly per diem rate was, to get us to the 12-month period and reduce the ARPA allocation by said amount. I mean, but, yeah, but if this group makes that motion, he can make that change.
Well, we have your contract, so we make the change, but again, our corporate membership.
Right, but at least you would have an approved contract to present to your group.
We would have something to present, so.
And I can sign it.
With a signature.
So, so, yes, we can make that amendment, and you can certainly sign it. We can't sign it.
Well, when you say you, are we writing the contract, or you?
Well, we write the contract. We're your vendor. You don't.
That, that's why.
You don't.
Every time I send a contract, then it comes back in different.
And I will let this department go garrulous, because we, we've always, we're the vendor, and I will let the legal people, I don't want to be here all over the legal stuff, let them talk about it tomorrow, call it fun.
But the challenge, the challenge has been, why we got to this point.
So we could, hold on one second, hold on one second.
David.
To do just what you said, David, and we can try to get it approved, to, to our tent, if you all approve that.
The challenge is that, that last year, we had received contract changes that were not consistent with what we all agreed on. So this February, what we asked is that any changes, if there were track changes with lines, it'd be easy, but they're not. They require staff to sit down and look at each document, word, 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 and then compile a whole document that shows what those track changes are.
It is.
It overloads our staff of two to be able to do that. So what we've asked, we understand that most of the time the vendor creates the contract, but we asked in February that any change to the contract that you would like to make, we would do the track changes on, so that everybody's on the same page. And consistently, this year, we have received multiple versions of the contract without clearly articulating what those changes are. That's all we've asked for. That's why it's so complicated. And that's why we are saying we will help you, we will make the changes so we all have the same language. That's where we're at.
You're going to let the lawyers.
I mean, I got all the emails, so it's, it's consistent.
So like I said, if you, you guys do what Councilmember Nerr said, we'll make the changes in the document, and send it to Mr. Gaskell, and then on July the 10th, I'll present this to the members. The challenge is, the June 30th contract expires, and that, those funds are needed, along with the county funds to pay, like our insurance alone is 74,000 dollars, so we try to get that money in the bank. Yes, we can do transfers and all that, and that, that just makes the books look ugly, and you all have questions why is that count going down? And we can do that. I'm not going to tell you where we can.
And you have to take deep with faith that we'll get it done.
Yep.
We've been good for our work.
So, we, we can do that, if you all make the motion to do that, we'll get the document tomorrow from Mr. Gaskell, and on July 10th, we'll present it to, to the legislature for their blessing.
But you, you're not expecting us to disperse funds prior to having a signed contract?
I don't, I mean, I, I don't think that would happen.
Just, so the honest would be on you to get it done soon.
Yes, on July 10th, and you, you guys have the check threaded, and you know what the numbers are going to be.
Just one thing, you made a comment about the information. Did the information prepared by Mr. Bergen and provided us with, 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 with explanations prior to dispersing those, those figures? I would ask that, that you would, you would provide us with, with Mr. Bergen's figures and allow us to digest it. Again, visually, because I'm sure those figures will say something different to each one of us, and then give us the opportunity to ask questions.
Oh, oh, yeah. And we, and we discussed that in the contract, stuff, everything's seven days ahead of time. That September 30th, we wouldn't give it to you on September 30th and ask for work sessions on October 1st.
Okay. So, I'll make a motion to whatever you all.
Can I ask?
I think we need something a little more.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay, so what, what, what I presume the council is about to do is to make a motion that the BFC contract amount be increased to 200,000, and the ARPA amount be reduced by 83,000 and change.
There you are.
And that's what David is going to send to me tomorrow.
I'll send it to you in the morning.
Just that change.
Just that change.
Yeah, and the date will be moved to.
To the full year.
To the full year.
Yeah, and that's what I was going to say.
I verify.
I just want to make sure.
The EMS agreement is.
Yeah.
It's, it's.
We added, we added on page, whatever it is.
The one.
The EMS.
Why is that?
We already, we already.
It says, and it talks about the cause, and the address of possible facilities in the town limits.
We already.
And this is the one time.
I've got that one right here. Before you leave.
One time.
If all of it's the exact same document, I've got a copy right here that I can sign with.
Was it laying general proof, you don't think?
It's a document that will be approved.
You'll get the whole.
Do you have a section?
What day?
What do you need?
Yeah.
Section missing.
Then we need to fix the.
Got them right here.
So Natalie, what was your concern?
The concern that allocation of ARPA is one time, you're not establishing payment for the future.
Exactly, one time.
Correct, I agree with that. And if, if we're signing your document, they need to review it to make sure it is exactly what, and you will not.
We're just going to change those two numbers.
And when will we know more about this grant? When will you know if you've gotten it approved?
Did I get a motion?
No, I did not.
I'm like one, but we got business. Well, the motion to accept the.
Changes as specified by our town attorneys with the dates for 12 months.
Indicating the one-time ARPA reallocation.
Second.
All in favor say aye. All opposed?
You don't have. Can I answer, Council?
Yes, please.
So if they're all around three of the allocations, there could be up to 20 rounds of allocation. The goal is for all of the federal money to be allocated by the end of the federal fiscal year, which is September 30th.
Okay, so you will know either yes or no.
Unless for some reason, you slow it around, and they'll tell us that, it'll be future rounds, but not September, we hope to have that.
So Mike, so I, and again, I, when you know, can you please, even if you black out your date or your address, can you please send us the information so we know if you've gotten it or haven't?
We'll let you know right away, because we'll need the other half of the check. And then we'll have to come have a discussion about the 81 that just got moved in.
As we got it through the year, now we got to give it to Mayor.
Thank you for.
Thank you. I, I want the takeaway to be that we do really appreciate the service, we do support you and your volunteers, and I think that I speak for all of us, as well as what Councilmember Burrell said, we want equitable funding for you all. So we just got to have the tool we have to do it.
All right, thanks you all.
Thank you.
All right, up next, Delia number six reports.
I just have a down under set up there.
Thank you.
Go back, hey, hey, go back for a second.
Oh, he'll get there, he'll get there, we do have that.
All right, come on.
We do have that.
Let's hit the planning card.
It's not late.
Yeah, there we are.
Looks beautiful.
You haven't seen it in person.
How was it paid for?
It was $250,000.
It was paid for on a planning.
It's not a new car.
Yeah, this is actually a refurbished, two old town administrator ago car.
I'd say longer.
I know it is.
It was Tony first.
No, it was.
I think it was Lawrence.
Tony had it first, she picked three.
Was it Tony?
Yes.
Four town administrators ago.
Tony had it first, then Lawrence.
Must have been right at the tail.
It was.
There we are, four town administrators ago. So the car's been paid for for a long time.
We told her to light it up.
No, I think it's, I think it's brightened up and serves its purpose. Thank you, Dave.
It actually turned out better than we thought. The renderings that they sent us were a little hard to gauge.
I got that, I got that design from, if you go to the city of Lewis, they have a code, they have a parking enforcement vehicle that strikes the exact same way. But you did a beautiful job, Dave, thank you.
Public services, man.
Well, I got to tell you, Lewis.
What's that? Don't worry, I got Chevron on eye for you too. It is visible, which is.
Stay away, stay away.
Nope, I'm good. Okay, any questions for departmental reports?
None.
Thank you. Up next, yes.
Put your, put your hand down.
I think you might be getting some road trips from the table.
My name, Jimmy's staring at me, I know it's late. It, it just bothered me to no extent to hear this conversation. And it bothered me because we've gone through a budget process, and all of you realize how intensive work was and what we put behind. And then we come back and do the budget as if they were not part of it. Asking to terminate the services, it's basically, I'm looking at this people right now, they're staring at me, and it hurt, because they've been told to cut their budget. They did not come back and say we're going to cut our service and not provide it any longer. And permission to speak tenderly, as of right now, a fire company did not draw the money for EMS allocation for fiscal '23 in full, and we're in June '26. So if this year they able to fund the personnel and still have leftovers, they did not need the capital of 220 for fiscal '23 that they carried forward to fiscal '24. And now coming back to us and saying they're going to terminate the contract as of July, I mean, January, this is just unheard of. I'm sorry. It's very disrespectful. That's why I initially said, take, take what we have earmarked for you, deal with that, and what you have, get the grant. Show us the grant. Show us the grant. I want to see come September, if we've gotten approval or non-approval. If there's nothing shown, I don't want to talk about giving any more monies. I don't want to talk about replacing $85,000. Because if you didn't apply for the grant in the first place, why are you sitting here talking about something that you never did? And I should have said that while they were here, but it is 11 o'clock. And this is. Quarter of the reports that come from financials, I do not see them. And the quarter of the reports that you see, I don't even know what you look at your end. So that's another thing need to be in agreement. If you would like to see the paperwork or financial reports provided by Bergio or whatever the CTA company they utilize, it's your request, it's your right to look at them and understand them. As I understand, the fire company nor EMS have no debt on their books.
No.
They're fully funded with zero debt. Town of Berlin carries debt. We cut the budget every year, and we struggle to provide the best services. If police department been told to cut the cameras, they don't argue, they just cut the cameras.
The last audit we paid for indicated that they were cash handed.
Yes, keep in mind that every one of our departments trimmed almost $600,000 to their total balance budget.
That's your answer.
They came in with blackmail tonight.
I mean, and just sit here and say, per diem.
There was blackmail.
That's, per diem will become an extortion. I'm sorry, how dare you.
That's my point. All right, let's, let's say departmental reports are done.
We got to go, the chief's breakfast at 7:00.
I know.
Most of the clothes.
Chief, you're picking us up, right? Because I might need to be woken up.
You probably.
All right, so comments from the public, do we have any?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
What?
No, you're, you're in the meeting, go ahead, please.
Just real quick, if there's any way.
I'm not going to ask you to get up or anything, just go ahead.
If you don't know who I am. Just, if there's any way you guys would even consider going back to like a different agenda format, I know that Steve, I think you had said that a motion could be made, the public could talk through an item, but I know that something that has been really bothering a lot of people, they feel like they can cut out, that you guys will have like, when, when the tax budget was going on, and the public hearing, or, you know, the budget itself and everything. It's just, you guys were talking about it, or you asked for the public hearing before, for people to make a couple of comments, and you guys would make your comments, or you would make your comments, and then nobody could say anything until the end. And it kind of cuts people out. And like tonight, I thought, I mean, it's late, and it's way past my bedtime, but it was awesome. People were here and expressing what they thought. And a lot of people agreed, nobody was arguing or anything. But if there'd be any way just to change that guy, it would be appreciated.
I'll say that the favorite part for me has always been the citizens. I've always enjoyed dialogue, always enjoyed conversation. It's not my favorite part to tell people thank you for your message. I try to follow up with those, Sarah and I chase after everybody that leaves here, trying to schedule a time for us to talk. Some take us up on it, some don't. But the reason that what happened was, you all, the taxpayers pay for us to take training. And I, I went to a course, I brought it back, the information to the council, I said, this is what's being recommended, this is what our peers are doing, this is the reason why. And we implemented those things, it was truly public comment. It's designed to let you, if you want to come up and talk about the color of the sky, you really have every opportunity to do that. And, and that's the way it's done by design. The Q and A part, we try to, I take cokeyest notes to try and respond to everybody's points as I can during my portion to be able to comment. But really, it's the, it's because if I treat you differently than I treat somebody else, it opens up the town for liability, and that's the sad part.
The, the thing is, there's no discussion, there's no banter back and forth. And it's like, you know, we can get up there and I can tell you, you know, Michael's on here or whatever it is, but there's no feedback. And when you guys are up there talking, discussing, you're not hearing what we're saying, because, you know, two hours later, we get our five minutes at the end of the meeting. I'm just saying, you know, I, I don't know what other jurisdictions do, but we're a small town, you've got like 50, 100 people, and a lot of them are kids, and they're not here. It's like, you know, let's keep it more on a personal level, on a small town thing, where we, where we can talk, even if we disagree, let's be able to talk. But the way it's set up now, it's, I mean, I don't know if you saw with the We Heart Berlin page, but, I mean, honestly, it's pretty, it's pretty, it's, it just, it's, it's making a separation that doesn't need to be there.
And the thing is, is that I think that, and this is just me, I, I think that we need to do a better job as the town, letting folks understand the process, right? We've talked a lot about process. There's, there are ways, like if you see an agenda item, or anybody sees an agenda item, that you have a concern with, you have representatives, right? So you live in District 2, I know that because I represented you for a number of years. I was accessible, I'm sure Jack is accessible. If you have something that, or any one of them up here on the council, they're your representatives. So if there's an agenda item, whatever it may be, if you have a, a challenge with that, or a question, or a concern. with that, or a question, or a concern, the way that it's structured, the way that it's supposed to be, right, you would take that concern to your elected official, they represent you and other constituents, and they should be able to at least answer your question, help you find the resources, or articulate those concerns here at that meeting. Your opportunity to comment is, and I'm not saying you per se, but public's opportunity for comment is on the agenda as an item for comment. I will say that when we went through this with our peers, Ocean City had the longest public comment time, and we adopted their standard, five minutes. We had discussed the public comment time previously, and it was always three minutes, but we went on the higher side with what, what Ocean City has. I think Snow Hill's three minutes, Pokemon does not specify the time, and the county did.
We talked with them, they're two minutes, many, it's all fair, I think it was three at this time.
And the county is zero. Go comment at the county meeting, it's zero, and we want to protect that.
County or the board.
And I don't understand what you're saying, like whether it's three minutes or five minutes or whatever, I'm just talking about, when there's something big like a budget or where there's some item that needs to be discussed, maybe at the end of that, of that period, there could be, you know, where there doesn't need, a note, a motion doesn't need to be made, because as I said, it's like, you're cutting people out, you're not including what the people who elected you guys to do your job, you're cutting us out of our say because you think that this is the better way to handle it, and honestly, we're, we're smaller than Pokemon, we're smaller than Psalm Spirit, and I do sincerely.
But the, the other thing is, where, the thing is, is that we're not trying to cut anybody out, and as Councilmember Green said, and this body knows, every one of these members know that they can make a motion at any time to accept public comment, the thing is, is that I have to put together the agenda with staff, and we try to anticipate things, but we can't anticipate everything, and, and we try to provide public comment and structure, I try to be as lenient as I can, I don't cut people off right at five minutes and try to say, wrap it up, like.
All that tonight.
I try to be respectful of that, we all do, but we have to follow the rules, so that's consistent for everyone.
And so.
Which we do, but also you have to be understanding that if we take a different set of rules with some than others, that that opens up the town for liability.
No, I'm saying, do the same rules for everybody.
Which we're trying to do.
You know, but it's like, and it doesn't even have to be after each thing, just after certain things that, that are important, like not that it's all not important, but the more important.
Mayor, just a suggestion, like just talking when I'm at the conference network, you know, ask, how do you communicate, how do you hold people in the budget, how do you ask questions, how do you do the works? And so, just a suggestion, besides the meetings, because it's all formal, and I hear what you're saying, you only have, I'm obligated to speak, how about we do small sessions? You come and grab me, or you come and grab Jamie, we set, schedule a time in the daytime, go to, I don't know, Water Plant, and post it to the website, so all whoever have questions, you're welcome to come and look where we're gonna be drilling you well, or during the budget, you're gonna come to the conference room and ask all the questions about the budget. It doesn't have to be in a public meeting.
We actually, I sent something to Mary and to Sarah.
I think it would be wonderful just to have people talking to actual departments as well, because we didn't ask questions, yes.
Councilmember Nichols and Oris, you were sitting in the opening session when the city of Laurel was going, I think, no, it wasn't, somebody.
Somebody.
It was Laurel, it was a, not, it was hours, almost like, well, hours, they were saying that, City University, and I said, you know, maybe we should talk about a way that we can start getting folks in our departments and asking those questions. I even recognized that there are questions that this setting is not the best for, which is why my office is trying to schedule ways that we're out of this building and accepting those comments. We, we all wanna be accessible, we don't do this for the money. We don't stay here until eleven fifteen. I've got, my wife's asleep, my son's asleep, I'm pretty sure you all got family that are asleep.
I know it's wrong.
I need someone. So we're not here because we like to say thank you for your comment, I hate it. So, is there anything else that we can let our staff go home? Is there, would you like public comment?
Jamie, thank you for being here, we'd love to see more young people present, so I'd like for you all as the future to be here to make your, make your points known. I'm stopping there because your perspective, your perception and our needs are, are different, but thank you for being present. Have a good night, motion to return.
Well, hold on, wait, 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 comments from the council, ladies and gentlemen.
I don't have a face.
Councilmember Nichols.
Nothing, I'm done.
Oris.
Yeah, real quick. Okay, I'd like to follow up with, with what Mary said and what Debbie said earlier on the public comment process for our meetings, and I really don't need to take comment or discussion after this, it's just my opinion. It's not really working the way it is, it's just not. In fact, our own charter stipulates council procedure, the council shall determine its own rules and order of business. So this is where I believe, there's been an error on this, and my concerns with interfering too much on these basic pillars of accessibility and dialogue are fostering attitudes, apathy toward government, less involvement, and just fueling fires of division, and it's totally opposite of what we want. We want people to be on committees and whatnot. Mayor, you had just mentioned right now, that admin has difficulty deciding what is important and what the public comment might be referencing. Well, in my.
Admin doesn't, that, that's me, I have to determine what you all or the public may perceive as being a hot topic, I can't, I want crystal ball.
Then the mayor. Well, the point I'm trying to make here is that if it's important to them, it should be important to us, and with a set timeframe of five minutes to comment, any mayor who serves a presiding officer can maintain order, and we can have effective and constructive dialogue between our elected officials, staff, and residents, like we did today. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Green?
Thank you. Hold on, hold on.
Second.
Comments from the press, no, my comments, I don't have any. Comments from the press, now, thank you. Councilmember Nerv, maybe the second, but everybody's in favor. Thank you all.